I will call to order the meeting of the Emeryville Planning Commission today on February 22nd. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Banta?
Here.
Commissioners Guerrero and Kang have excused absences this evening. Commissioner Keller?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Vice Chair Barrera?
Here.
Chair Donaldson?
Here.
We have a quorum of five commissioners present.
Okay, this is the time for public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Does anyone wish to speak? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the approval of the action minutes from January. Any corrections, additions?
Move approval?
I'll second it.
Okay. And I'll abstain just because I wasn't here.
Excuse me?
I'll abstain because I wasn't here.
Oh, okay.
So we could have a vote since there's an abstention.
Do you want to vote? Okay.
Uh, let's see. Commissioner Banta?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Barrera?
Aye.
And Chair Donaldson?
Aye.
Four ayes, one abstention. The action minutes are approved.
Thank you. So the Community Development Director's report.
All right. So concerning recent city council actions, they have had two meetings since your last meeting, and those council meetings were on February 6th and 20th. On February 6th, the council hosted a special celebration of Black History Month, which included performances by St. Columba Catholic Church Choir, remarks by Assembly Member Tony Thurman, proclamations for several honorees, the reading of the winner of an Emory Unified School District essay contest, and the raising of the Pan-African flag in front of City Hall. And also, on February 6th, the council was introduced to our new administrative assistant, Maggie Mahaffey. On February 20th, the council approved an amendment to the master fee schedule to add a fee of $2,500 per pole per year for small cell antennas attached to city streetlights and other city poles. Representatives of AT&amp;T were at the meeting and requested that the item be continued, but the council chose not to continue it, so they did adopt the fee. We have a study session on a proposed AT&amp;T small cell antenna on Powell Street scheduled for your March 22nd meeting and a public hearing on that item on April 26th. The council heard reports from four of its advisory committees concerning their accomplishments during the past year and goals for the coming year. Two of these four committees are staffed by the Community Development Department, including the Public Art Committee and the Economic Development Advisory Committee. The Housing Committee, which is also staffed by Community Development, will report next month. No report from the Planning Commission is required since I report on your actions to the council following every commission meeting. The council approved a resolution and the first reading of an ordinance to put a $50 million affordable housing general obligation bond on the June 2018 ballot. And finally, the council approved the design proposal by Joey Rose Studio for the Public Art Mural Project on the Greenway between Powell Street and Stanford Avenue, which was recommended by the Public Art Committee. And other matters, I just have one, which is to confirm that we are on for a special meeting on March 15th. I believe we will have five, possibly six, of you in attendance at that meeting. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Any questions for Charlie?
The meeting on the 15th will be at 6:30 as usual?
Right, 6:30 in this room Thursday, March 15th. The agenda will go out next week.
Great, thank you. Are there any disclosures of conflicts of interest or ex parte communications? I have a conflict. The firm that I work for works for the Lennar Company, so I'll recuse myself from that Sherwin-Williams project public hearing, and I am going to, in the meantime, move that item to the beginning of the agenda because we need to proceed with that so that we have enough people to vote on it. So, turn it over to Vice Chair Barrera.
Okay, this item is a public hearing for the Sherwin-Williams Architectural Final Development Plan, and we will hear a presentation from staff.
Good evening, Vice Chair Commissioners. This is our first item today, Sherwin-Williams Architecture Final Development Plan. It's been processed, a long one. You have seen this proposal four times. The dates are in the past year. The last time was last month. And in terms of the comments that were made at last month's study session, one was to consider making the pitched parapet at the gallery volume on building B2 thicker or otherwise more substantial so it did not appear like a thin edge. And the direction was given to study this more and come up with some improvement, to consider making the corners of building D where balconies are framed with steel white flange structural elements, to consider using bold accent colors in other buildings similar to what they have done to building D. And there was a general concern regarding the effectiveness of the green screens proposed for the garage building B2. In general, the commission was fairly satisfied with the proposal, and at this point, the packet that you have, there have been no changes to the design or the program since the January Planning Commission. The changes are more in terms of getting rid of typos, some greater details that staff requested from them, but in terms of actual changes to what you have already seen, there have not been any since the last month. And it is for this reason that I am not going to walk through every sheet, but just say that the programming is the same, the footprints are the same, the design elements are the same, and we do have the whole plan set on the computer, so if you have any question regarding any building or any particular sheet, you just, we can call it up on our computer here. So in terms of findings that need to be made by the commission, it's mainly the findings for consistency with the general plan and the approved PUD PDB that was approved in 2016. And the finding that need to be made is that the FDP substantially conforms with the approved PDP and that the conditions of approval of the PUD have been met. We believe that the project conforms with the approved PUD PDP in terms of the number of units, amount of park and open space, as well as the location of the residential retail and open spaces on the site. The post heights of the building are in compliance as well with the government approved heights in the PDP. The only major departure from the proposed PDP as originally presented by the applicant is that the affordable units will now be distributed throughout the four buildings instead of being located in one building. This was allowed as an option in approved PDP, and as noted above, this change is in compliance with our inclusionary ordinance and arguably preferable. So these are further detailed, explained in detail in the staff report and included in the resolution, and these are the only two findings that the commission needs to make. The staff report also kind of gives you an extensive explanation of how the project complies with the applicable guidelines of Park Avenue District, the citywide design guidelines, including family-friendly design guidelines, and some of the regulations in our planning, planning regulations for standards for open space, trash and recycling, screening, and water-efficient landscape. I'm going to go directly to the conditions of approval because that's mainly what the main discussion today is probably likely going to be. One is regarding the retail space. This I have not pointed out previously, but at the time of city council approval of the PUD, the council directed that a condition of approval regarding that the retail uses in the project be local-serving, non-chain businesses be added, and therefore, staff has included this condition for uses on the ground floor, commercial, and retail spaces, and these include the following. The permitted uses include all those that are permitted in the neighborhood retail overlay zone. Users that are conditionally permitted in the neighborhood retail overlay zone would be permitted with a use permit from the Planning Commission. And all permitted and conditionally permitted users must be local-serving and small businesses as those terms are defined in our municipal code.
Vice Chair, if I can, I have a question that's particular to this, so I don't want to go back to it because it might be difficult, but the way that this is written and read, say if Pete's wanted to open a coffee shop in the small retail space, the way I'm reading this, this excludes them from doing that, is that correct?
No.
Aren't they a national chain? I mean, they are all the way in Boston and...
I'm going to let the...
See, as I'm thinking, you know, Pete's to me would be a great asset there. Their corporate offices are right there. If they could open a coffee shop, I think that would be an amazing thing, but the way I'm reading this, it precludes that.
Yeah, they have.
Well, it references the local serving and small businesses, right?
Right, so they wouldn't be a small business.
Small business is defined in the municipal code as a company with fewer than 55 employees in Emeryville.
Okay, so it doesn't matter how many outlets and how big they are, but it's more how they're local?
Right.
Oh, okay, because I was concerned about it, because I don't know if that's even a possibility, but I certainly wouldn't want to make something that would not allow that.
But actually, they do have one store in Emeryville, which they probably don't have 55 people at that, but they do have their corporate headquarters in Emeryville.
Right.
So I'm not sure if that would factor into the calculation of the 55 or not. But I would argue, I would just remind you that the same would probably apply to Starbucks or, you know, other chains as well.
Or 7-Eleven.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
There are some modifications to the conditions of approval, and at this time, I am going to point to some of the handouts that are on the dials. One is a memo from me, which outlines the various changes, which I will walk you through in my presentation. And second is a letter from Park dated 21st of February. And the last is the revised TDM dated February 16th. The revised TDM was submitted a few days ago in response to some of the comments that Park had made, and the applicant went ahead and made the changes, and so this memo dated February 16th is what would be the part of the record and part of the conditions of approvals that reference those. And there are two conditions of approvals which reference this memo, and so these are the two, and the change here is that the date is changed from February 5th to the 16th to reflect that this is the memo on record and is part of the condition. The third condition that is, has been changed or modified is, so the cross is what was in the condition and is being removed, and what is underlined is what is added. And this is basically clarifying that the city shall be hiring fare and payers or a transportation consultant to do the peer review of the annual TDM reports that we will receive and provide recommendations to the Community Development Director. And based on the peer review and the recommendations there, the director has the authority by this condition to require modifications to the plan. So that is what this condition modification is doing and clarifying as to what happens with the TDM peer review and what are the consequences. In terms of the fourth condition that has been changed is regarding the West Oakland Shuttle. This is in response to actually both the applicant as well as Park. So what has been added is the first sentence, "The shuttle shall be open to the general public." There has been some discussion both in memo and in the letter by Park as to who this shuttle will be open to. For all practical matters, it's just, it is a community benefit because they will be getting bonus points by providing this shuttle, and therefore, it should be open to the public in general. The second change, "The shuttle shall be in operation within 60 days after occupancy of 50% of total residential units for the project." That has been added, and the language has been crossed off which was there, and this is mainly to ensure that there is consistency of the language in PUD condition of approval and this condition of approval, so that's what we are doing here. The last sentence is regarding subsidized ride-hailing services may not be substituted for a shuttle. This is just to clarify and keep everybody at ease as to that the shuttle will be needed in order to obtain the bonus points, and there was some discussion about how the ride-hailing services like Uber and Lyft could be used, but this is, this was a suggestion, and it would be, if it is included, it would be in addition to the shuttle, not a substitute for the shuttle. So this added language is just to clarify that. This is a condition of approval that staff has a disagreement with the applicant, and so there is a condition of approval 7A, there is a whole bunch regarding design, and most of them are accepted by, acceptable to the applicant other than this one. So there is a condition already which says that all windows have a recess of 2 inches, and this is an additional condition which says that some windows shall be 4 inches, and this, and the condition later on goes on to kind of define where the 4-inch recess needs to be. The reason we have put this is because of, we believe, the renderings, which are part of your project, indicate, the shadow lines there indicate the recess of 4 inches. And this was a discussion after the study session last month where the staff and I, basically I and Kevin and the architect discussed about the renderings. I wanted the renderings to be accurate depiction. A lot of times, staff has come under criticism about why the buildings don't look when constructed to the pretty pictures that they have been shown, and over time, staff has tried to, you know, counter that by ensuring that what is not, you know, the details, devil is in the details at the end of the day, and these are some of such details. So these are different sheets that are basically rendered sheets, and if, at the later date or later time, the commission wants to look at these sheets, these have collated them and discussion can be made. And our city architect, Arnold, is also present. If you have questions regarding, you know, the renderings and the shadow lines and why four, why not three, and why does this look four and two and things like that. However, this is a condition that the applicant is not happy with, and their suggestion is to change the 4-inch to 2-inch, and I'm sure you'll hear more about that from Kevin. So in terms of environmental review, we are going to rely on the final EIR, which was certified by the city council on September 6th, 2016, and there has been no substantial changes in the project or changes to the circumstances under which the project will be undertaken, and no new information has been received that would require any kind of additional analysis. So that concludes my presentation. We are requesting that the commission approve the project subject to the conditions of approval attached to the staff report and as modified by the memo dated today's date. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer, otherwise I will hand this over to the applicant.
Any questions for Maru?
Okay, um, thank you, Maru, for the great report. A couple of questions. The West Oakland BART shuttle that you referred to?
So, the project needs 100 bonus points, and at the PUD, way to get, how the project was going to earn those bonus points was outlined, and one of them was this West Oakland shuttle.
So my question is, which, when it says West Oakland, what station are they referring to?
West Oakland BART station.
They're going to go all the way down to West Oakland BART?
Correct.
Oh, that's fantastic, great. My next question is, the discussion you just gave us about the reveals and so forth, the 2 inches, 4 inches, 3 inches, et cetera, so how does that all get sorted out? I mean, are you, are we being asked to approve one or another set of dimensions here at this time, or what's going on with that?
So, so if you look at the renderings, and then when we, when, as reviewed by the city architect, he identified certain sheets where the shadow lines, as shown, as seen, indicate something more than 2-inch recess. This was an issue that we talked about, discussed last month as well, where the applicant said, Kevin said, that he was okay with a 2-inch recess throughout the project. And the commission did not indicate that it had any objection to that. So after that, when I talked with the applicant, I said that if 2 inches is what you're proposing, then your renderings should reflect that. And then, and that was the discussion. And then we received these plans that are in front of you, and then they were, these were reviewed again by Arnold, and then the sheets were identified where the shadow lines are still looking deeper than a 2-inch recess would.
Right, which I think is very astute of the staff to have undertaken that analysis. Can I ask, the recess, is it measured from the finished face of the building envelope to the face of the glazing plane? Is that...
So I am going to let Arnold talk to you about that. In our ordinance, we do not have that defined, but there is a general practice that is used, so I'll let Arnold explain that.
All right. Let me just clarify a couple of things. I believe in the conditions, based on the discussion from last meeting, there was a clarification that where there was a, excuse me, where there's a window and a wall face, certain materials would be required to have the window recess as they showed in the rendering, so it would be like brick and stucco and things like that, but where there was sort of a rib metal panel or something like that, it would not necessarily be required to have a recess. I think Commissioner Keller made a point about that. But what we're talking about here is where there are multiple layers on the facades, like you will have an outside layer with a pilaster that's very prominent, and then it'll be set back with another layer of stucco, and then from there, it will be a window behind that. So in certain locations, there's a much deeper kind of profile on one of these layers, and those are the layers that were identified, those would be the ones that would have a deeper than 2 inches. All the other ones would be 2 inches. So the goal is wherever there is a line on the drawing that shows a different plane, there would be a minimum of 2-inch offset, but in a couple places, it was clear that it was much deeper, so we just said, well, minimally 4 inches.
Okay, so my question is specifically, you measure from the outside face of the envelope, building envelope?
Yeah.
To what, the window frame or the window glazing?
So that would be from face of the surface of the material to the face of the glazing.
Okay, thank you.
And then from face of surface to face of face where it's like two materials.
Got it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Maru, I have some questions on the TDM, so who, at what time and who should I direct those to?
You can ask me right now.
And this might just be because it's not germane to the project itself, but I was a little surprised that within the study that there was no mention of the F transit, the transbay line in this study or the use of that. It's like, you know, this line that goes every half hour to San Francisco, basically a block from this project, is never mentioned or considered at all, so I was wondering why that was. And also, when we talk about car share, we are actually looking at hopefully approving gig car, which is the AAA's car share that doesn't take a dedicated parking spot, and I'm wondering if that was factored into this at all, because I think with something like that, we could probably use less dedicated spaces in garages, so I just want to know if that just came along too late in the game, it's not an approved?
That was not, that was not considered.
Right, and, okay, so I think that's something that, you know, we could at least keep in our minds, that this hopefully is coming within a month or so, that we will have that new and different kind of car share, which I think is going to be more valuable than zipcar. But I'm just kind of, you know, I struggle with the fact that everyone wants to ride from Emeryville all the way to West Oakland BART, wait for the BART train, get on the BART train, within 20 minutes, if you're on the F bus, you're in downtown San Francisco. So I don't understand why the F transbay bus was not part of this study.
Well, so, that's a good point, but in addition to, I mean, the origin of this shuttle was, it was a little different. It came through a bonus point system. And the original TDM, which is supplemented here, was written at the, you know, before the shuttle was conceived, but that still does not preclude your question as to why this was not examined. As you may have noted in the staff report, in terms of how this TD, I mean, in terms of this shuttle, its operations, you know, where it will stop, what is the second stop, all that will be, you know, submitted as part of a condition of approval before the first building permit is issued. So this would be a point that I would ask at that time to our consultant as to, you know, what is, what is the feasibility and the viability of the shuttle in terms of its operating characteristics? So that is how we would address your comment.
Okay, and I think Kevin wants to, but you could do it during your presentation, Kevin, yeah? Okay. I'm just looking at the overall traffic reduction and how that factors into that, and that, you know, we may not be so dependent on the shuttle as other things that already preexist, so.
Okay, thank you. If there are no more questions, and Kevin, are you up?
Okay, well, good evening, Commissioners. Good to see everybody again. Thank you, Maru, for the presentation, and again, for those who aren't familiar with us, myself and my team, I'm Kevin Maugh with Lennar. We are the applicant. With me tonight are my cohorts, Ron Metzger and Brady Smith with LPAS, and so they will be brought up here to answer any kind of architectural detailing-related questions that we could talk about, that Maru had mentioned earlier as well. But before I begin, you know, we are very excited to be here at the hearing tonight. It's been a long journey, and so the first thing that I really want to do is thank staff, Charlie, Maru, Andrea, and especially the Park Avenue Residence Committee for all of us. I mean, it's been a very long journey, and it's been very fulfilling to be working and partnering with the city staff and with the community to be here this evening, and so I think I've mentioned this before, it's kind of the, it takes a village concept for such a large-scale project as this, and so we're very happy to have had such great partners who have committed so much time and effort and quality feedback along the way. So I think it was, as we mentioned in previous approval hearings, that like, I think this process has really helped this project become even better as it becomes a collective effort that is before you this evening, so thank you guys again, appreciate all the time and the feedback. So really, you know, by design, I think the intent was, tonight was more just about the official kind of working through any kind of last-minute kind of details. We don't have really a big formal presentation because there hasn't been a lot of kind of changes to the project this evening. I'm happy to talk more about the TDM plan. And Commissioner Keller, your question, my understanding, Maru, correct me if I'm wrong, is that when I talked to Nelson Nygaard, who put the plan together, the way they analyze it is that the mitigation measures, such as the shuttle, the bike share, and kind of all the various other mitigation measures that are listed in there, should be specific to the project itself, so that something that the project is doing to reduce the vehicle trips, as opposed to analyzing existing infrastructure such as the F bus or the Emery Go Round, for instance, and using that as a mitigation measure, because those are existing services, and so it's not kind of project-specific. So I think that's my understanding of how that baseline works, and I don't know if, Maru, if that's kind of your understanding of how these TDM projects also come together, or the analysis of the TDM comes together.
Well, they do need to look at the existing infrastructure in place when they are looking at a particular measure, so that needs to get into account.
Yeah, and I think what, Maru, you're saying is that that could just further reduce the vehicle trips as we go through, and kind of the, and I think, I don't know if we talked about this at the last couple of hearings, but the TDM is a living document. It's an organic, dynamic document, because it was really designed to be modified and improved as the actual residents move in and their commute patterns and vehicle trips are being identified and what's working and what's not working. So it's really about, and so you'll see there's provisions in there, so every year, we would engage with the city to do a whole survey and to look at, see what's working, what's not working, what could we... what's working, what's not working, what could we kind of increase or decrease or add to it. And so it's really all about kind of finding kind of the right mix to, to bring the vehicle trip down. And so that's kind of the goal of how, of how we outline this. And so what we, what we've projected or what we've documented to date is kind of our best guess of how to get to that 30% reduction from the get-go, right? But ultimately, until those, until those residents move in and actually start using these various services and we can monitor and measure that, that's really where the kind of the, the rubber meets the road about how to, to put together a package of mitigation measures to help bring down those vehicle trips. And so ultimately, you know, the last meeting we had with Park was really centered around kind of this concept, and I appreciate their feedback and definitely want to apologize to them. I think we had some language in there that talked about the shuttle not being open to the community, which was kind of a, a misrepresentation on our part. So we, that's why Maru has revised that date to the 16th, because we, we clarified that. And then also, one of the other points they had in there was about the ride share, ride hailing and sharing kind of process. And as I mentioned to the, to the Park Committees, that, that is just one other idea or tool that could be brought in to the whole package of mitigation measures as we go through this dynamic kind of monitoring process to say, hey, if we're not hitting that 30% target after we kind of are, are, you know, everything's kind of up and running, here's another thing that we could bring in to help kind of reduce those vehicle trips. And so really, that was the whole intent of that, of that concept. There was never, kind of in our head, and then we clarified it here tonight, which I'm glad we did, is that there was never an intent to have that be in lieu of the, of the community shuttle itself. So, and I'm happy to talk more about that if, if any other questions come up.
Well, I just want to interject, and part of your TDM plan is an EZ Pass from AC Transit, is that not correct? Okay, so if we're not analyzing existing systems, you're using the AC Transit pass, you're not providing a new route from AC Transit, so what that pass is linking to is an existing system.
Right, so I think that's where-
So the F stop, yeah, the F bus is, is what ties into that EZ Pass.
Yeah, so it's kind of in there, but not fully in there, because I think it's more about the, like you said, this about, about the EZ Pass, giving them the ability to have a subsidized ability to go take the existing infrastructure itself. So maybe that's the way to, how that, that analysis gets pulled in.
I just think that we need to link the fact that there is a bus that goes directly to San Francisco.
Oh, sure, yeah.
As part of, I mean, it's not in the community, but it is in what Transit Circles would consider, you know, within walking distance.
Right. And so, and so with that, you know, the only other thing that we wanted to cover tonight was just, you know, there's the condition of approval that Maru had talked about, about the four inches versus the two inches. And I'm happy to have Ron and Brady come up. And really, what, the reason why we are asking for the two inches at this point is simply because we're still at the schematic level of design when it comes to wall types and thicknesses and assemblies. And so we just want to have a little bit of flexibility. You know, at the end of the day, it may be more than two, but we're saying, hey, at least now, from just as we actually detail out these various wall assemblies, it gives us that flexibility. And so that's really kind of where the, it was just more of, that's where our heads are at, knowing that we haven't gone down that road yet and detailed everything out to understand what exactly that dimension is. And so it doesn't just kind of, kind of put us into a, a tight spot, you know, no pun intended, of, of how, what those dimensions are. And so other than that, I think that is really the majority of what we wanted just to discuss this evening. I don't know if there's any general questions from, from the commissioners.
Any questions? Kevin?
I just, there was something I brought up that we didn't hear clarification on, and it was about the, the south-facing kind of projections of, is that building A? That was brick, and then in what our staff reports, it had the red stucco? Just want to verify, we're talking three sides of brick here on each of those?
Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot to make that. For the record, there is an error in the staff report, which suggests that the brick facade on building, let me see.
Is that B1?
B1 is not extended all the, all the way. So that should be stricken from the record, and the plans show what is being proposed.
Right. Okay, and then also, in the garages and etc., for bike parking, I haven't seen or heard any mention of lockers? Are you looking at?
We are, yeah, and there's a condition of approval that Maru has detailed in there that talks about those lockers.
Okay, so there will be some bike lockers inside the parking?
Inside, inside the bike store chairs, yes.
So, Kevin, I have just a general question for you and then a bunch of little specific questions.
Sure.
For Ron, probably. So generally, I just want to ask you, you know, we think you've been an excellent applicant. You've been really very responsive to, looks like, community input and to input from the commissioners, and you've gone through, I don't know, what is it, four or five study sessions here? So my question to you is, is, in this process that you've gone through, what, what do you think could be improved from an applicant's point of view, and what do you think was really successful?
Oh, good question. Time to reflect and to, to look at the big picture. I mean, you know, let me think about that, but I think, you know, I, I do believe that engaging in this community outreach process with the, with the Park Avenue Residents Committee has made this project better. It evolves it, because you get different thoughts and, and feedback and input. And with a project of this scale, I think that's what you really need to do from a, just a placemaking in the community type of feedback. You know, I, I guess you remember early on when we had the park kind of broken up into different spots and kind of, it was before it all got kind of merged into this one large, you know, park that had complete solar access and, and was, was easily available from the existing street network into the community. I think that was a great kind of aha moment of like, yeah, that makes a lot of sense, let's do that. And so from an improvement standpoint, I mean, you know, for developers, it's never fast enough, right? But we understand with, with these projects, they take time. And so, you know, we're, we're very excited to be here in front of you guys this evening with the hopes that we could break ground by the end of this, end of this year. So we're, we're kind of on, on our way to, to actually, you know, putting some shovels in the ground and, and bringing this community to a reality. But I mean, I think it's, you know, it's, it's been good. I mean, we've gotten great feedback and comments from the commission along the way, too. I think that has, that has helped out the, the overall look and feel of the, of the design and, and the project as well. And I think what really helped us, kind of thinking back to it, was actually having those early-on study sessions with the commission and with the, with the Park Avenue Residents Committee of saying, what do you guys vision this? Like, what are kind of these, you know, the, the look and the feel, right? I think getting that, that kind of high-level input early on puts us all on the same path, so you don't get to this, this kind of strained crossroads, you know, further down, where it's just, your, your people are struggling to communicate and it's just not feeling right. And so I think it's just the, the continued communication and feedback along the way has really helped kind of bring the, the project to where it is this evening.
Thank you. Ron, could I ask you some questions?
Coming up, Ron.
So, Ron, I'm, I, we had, we got these like four or five books from you guys for all these projects, for all the buildings. Do you have those handy?
We do. Let's see. Oh, is it a?
Are they all?
Is this it?
These are all London.
Oh, okay, is there a specific building?
Uh, yeah, building, uh, building B2.
So it's number five.
This one right here?
The other one.
Here.
That's B1?
That's B1.
B2 is in the middle.
Oh, all right, I'll get there one of these days. This guy.
But I'm not the only one.
I know, my eyes are going.
All right.
So if you, is that B2? Yeah, okay. So if you go to exhibit B2-04, which is the ground floor?
Yes.
So I, I always have these little technical questions that are probably annoying to everybody, but in any case, you, you see the, in the upper left, the bike parking? You have a bike lounge and bike parking, right?
Yes.
So I just, I'm curious, the bike parking, I see one door that goes to a stairwell, it looks like?
Oh, yes.
How do people actually access that? And where do they access it? Or is that the only way in, or how does that work?
So what you have there is you have, we will have other doors there, and we are currently working with the interior designer on the whole layout of that. So how, where doors are internal to that space and how that flows together will be more refined as we get into more detail.
I see, okay, so-
Yeah, it's just, I think it's more of a placeholder than fully kind of the wayfinding paths of-
Right.
-shown on the plan.
So last time around, and there was some comments about the gallery itself and about the space planning for that in the lower right there. And I know there was a question about, well, where's the storage, where are the offices, where are bathrooms, et cetera, X, Y, Z. What is the status of that, and how does that all get resolved?
That's actually a good comment, and I believe, Maru, in the exhibits, there's a, a two-page kind of a work letter that we've agreed to, that basically kind of details out in working with the, with Sharon, with the Park Avenue Residents Committee, kind of shows kind of the infrastructure that we'll be bringing into that space in terms of storage, restrooms, lighting, kind of HVAC loads. And so all of that will be detailed as we go through the, the construction drawing process, and also working with, with Sharon as the, as we kind of plan out the actual, how that gallery is going to lay out. But there is a, I don't-
So there is a condition of approval that clearly outlines that, and it includes the, basically how I would describe it as a wish list from, which was gathered through work of Park. And that is on page- Let's see. It should be in the bonus. Maybe Commissioner Banta, if you can continue with your questions, and I'll find the page.
Okay, sure. So in the same kind of category, I think last time around, there was discussion about having events out in the courtyard to the south of the gallery there, and that there might be chairs and so forth. And there was a question about where all that stuff might get stored, and there, I, I think there was a feeling that the gallery was, is not, should not be the storage room for that.
Correct, yes.
And I just wondered if you have taken any measures to address that.
Yeah, I think ultimately, if we did store those tables and chairs, they would have been in, in the main building area and outside of that gallery space. We haven't, we haven't really located a storage room yet for that, but that'll be part of the, of that process. But I think our goal is to try to keep those tables and chairs kind of out there for use as, as much as we can. It's actually surprising, like I've, you know, we, my office is in downtown Oakland, and there's some, you know, non-bolted-down seating that, that has been in the public way, that sits overnight and actually has been there surprisingly for over a year. So our hope is to hopefully, you know, have that same model of, of being able to keep those out for, for the longer term.
Great. So if you go to exhibit B2-15? So B2-15 shows the green, green screen walls that you have, on the east facade there of the parking structure, which look great. So the, the two that are next to the ground, I assume are, the roots for the plants occur in the, the, looks like landscape beds just in, at the, at their feet, is that correct?
Yeah, that would be, that would be our anticipation.
And then the two in the upper level of ones, it looks like there's a cantilevered box, is that a so-called planter box for those walls?
Yeah, there would have to be a planter box and irrigation at the base of all of those.
Okay, great. And then, Maru had a little list of recommendations that we delivered at last meeting, and the all-important widening of the gable top roof of the gallery. How did that work out?
We are widening that, and I realize it's not shown there, but it's probably about four feet wide.
Oh, it's four feet wide.
And it's difficult to see in the renderings, because it's fairly tall when you're at the ground, but we are proceeding with that.
So you're planning on actually making it about four feet wide?
Yes.
Okay, sounds great. So I think that, that addresses all my concerns, except, let me just come back to this discussion about the, the recessed, recess and so forth. Tell me what your, I mean, I understand the position that you don't want to be held to a depth that's going to be very costly for every window in your project. But it sounds like, from what the staff said, that some of the windows, you, you agree that all the windows are going to have a two-inch recess, and that some of them, they'd like to see four inches, because you gave us these renderings that appear to have recessed windows, and we want you to build what you're showing us. So what is, what is your position on these? I heard what Kevin said, but you know, what you're asking Kevin is for us to say, yeah, okay, we'll just hold you to two inches, and that, that's probably a, a difficult thing for us to come around to.
I, I think the main thing is, and I, I tend to be very exact when it says a minimum, that is in fact a minimum. And so I think we share the same intent as the city with all, all of the whole project, and I agree with Kevin, through the whole process, the project has gotten better every time. And so we would anticipate continuing as we develop the details, but we aren't in that, to that level of detail. So for instance, if our buildings are framed with two-by-sixes as the exterior wall, and then we go to two-by-fours to get the recess, that's only an inch and a half. It's not four inches. So to get a four-inch recess, even if we went from eight-inch studs to two-by-four, we're still not at four inches. So, and then, you know, do we have insulation? Do we have, we'll have den's glass? We, there's a whole bunch of stuff in the assembly that we don't, I don't know if it, is it four? Is it three and a half? Is it, is it two? Is it, so we were asking for the language to be more of approximate, so that we are getting the intent, and not, at the end of the day, if we have three and a half or three, that now we have to go and add, you know, go to a whole different thickness of framing or, or do something that would not be anticipated to get the, a similar effect.
Well, for example, I hate to make you do this, but if you go to, to building C, and you just go to the cover sheet for that?
We opened up C already?
You need to go to the desktop.
Are you?
So the cover illustration there shows the, the south facade facing the park, and you've got those lovely balconies and the big overhangs and so forth. And then you've got the windows that are set in, the one is in the south facade.
Yeah.
That seem, that, that appear to be, if you go to sort of in the middle and even to the west, where you have the gray wall, the, the rendering itself, it must have had those windows set back enough to generate those nice little shadow lines that you have there. So, I mean, there, these, these are the kinds of things I think that the staff is talking about.
Yes.
You're showing us this, we're all saying, looks great, whereas the east facade, for example, looks like the windows are almost flush, and that's what you showed us, and that's what we're basically approving. So what we're basically, what I think the staff is saying, and I think maybe the commissioners would agree, that if you do show these recesses, that we kind of expect you to do that.
That's correct. We, we, we would intend on building the intent of what we're showing. I just don't know whether that's actually four inches, or if it's three inches, or we did go back and update all the renderings to make sure we weren't overstating it, and that facade has more articulation, because we also have the, the metal panel doing different things. So that may in fact be that. I just, you know, the level of detail, it's, it's kind of-
No, I, I understand, you're not in construction documents. But when you actually did the rendering, your renderer has a dimension of offset, so you can just sort of ask him what that is. That might be what you do.
Oh, yeah, I don't know what the rendering offset is. We did go back and offset, and changed everything to make sure it was matching two.
Yeah.
So, and obviously, it goes to several feet at the corner, so it does change there. But our intent is to do what we're showing. I just don't know, it, when it says a minimum of four, I mean, we feel like, okay, it's approximately four, it could be three and a half, because that's common nominal framing, or, or, I just don't know exactly, once you get all the layers of the system in there.
All right, thank you very much.
All right.
I actually have a question, so this might be for staff. How do you, do, do the inspectors actually go out there with a ruler and measure that it's four inches, or how does that?
We'll be looking at construction drawings. That's where the checking will occur.
Got it. Are there any more commissioner questions? Okay, so this is a public hearing, and I will open it up to comments for the public, if there are any. And just note that you have three minutes, so if anybody would like to speak, please approach the microphone. And please sign in after you're done, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jack Gitsani.
Hi, I'm Jack Gitzany, a resident of 1500 Park Avenue and a co-chair of Park. This project's come a long way, and we think it's going to be a great addition to Emeryville. We'd like to thank Lennar for their openness to the community input during this process, and the planning commissioners for the role that you played in this process as well. I'd like to cover a few points from our letter that we sent to you recently. First, the shuttle service, which is part of the conditions of approval, is mentioned in the new TDM along with a subsidized ride-hailing program as an alternative measure. Park's concerned that this language, if approved, could make a required community benefit a negotiable item. Lennar stated to us today that this will not impact the amount of, or the availability of shuttle services to the general public in any way. We're happy with that, but we feel that this commitment to not impact the shuttle services should be formalized as part of any FDP approval. The next point is, the latest TDM cites a traffic reduction of 17% and mentions a 30% reduction requirement that's in the conditions of approval. Absent a commitment as to when the 30% goal will be reached, the 30% requirement loses meaning and loses enforceability. We encourage the commission to make the FDP approval, the TDM approval contingent on such a commitment in a way that makes the 30% goal an enforceable one, otherwise it may not be achieved. Finally, we feel that the latest PDM does not meet the shared parking requirements of the conditions of approval. The developer has identified only 34 spaces as shared parking, which is not very realistic for a project of this size. Under the conditions of approval, the public must have access to the shared parking, workers in Building I-31, and the guests of the residents will also all be going for these same 34 spaces, and that for this size is not adequate. We urge the planning commission to require that Lennar submit an amended TDM that has a realistic parking program before any TDM is approved. And that contacts pricing guidelines to ensure fairness in parking availability and clarification as to how the applicant will partner with the city to engage in parking management service would be useful as well. We hope you give these issues consideration. I think we're all here because we want to see an excellent result for this project, and getting these last few things done right can help make sure that this is really a wonderful addition to our city. It's made a lot of progress in that direction now, and we've got a few things that we need to make sure we don't mess up and ruin it. Anyway, that's our comments, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
So there's actually 107 spaces there, Sharon, right?
Seeing none, I will close the public comment and open it to discussion from the board, from the commission. Is there anyone that would like to start?
I have one question I forgot to ask, maybe Maru or Charlie can answer it. The gallery that's being proposed, the art gallery, how is that funded and who runs it?
Well, it's funded by the applicant for bonus points.
So that means in perpetuity it's funded?
Oh, oh, no, that's, Maru, there's a condition about that, is there not?
Yes. So there's a condition that the applicant will need to submit as an operating plan before the building parameters issued for this building, and this would kind of, we will work out at that time how the responsibilities are going to be divided, but Lennar is on the hook to provide an art gallery and a community room space with certain finishes, which are also in the condition of approval. So that is what they are going to be paying. In addition, your basic maintenance of that space will also be undertaken by Lennar.
So, but, Lennar then goes out into the marketplace and looks for a tenant, a gallery operator?
No, we, Lennar and staff, along with Park, will work out how the responsibilities for running the art gallery will work. We just didn't have the time to work out those kind of details between me, Kevin, and Sharon.
So, it's uncertain as to how the ongoing year-after-year funding would be accomplished for this, is that correct?
Lennar is not going to be on the hook for programming of the art space. Lennar is on the hook for providing the art gallery with all its finishing and maintaining that. So we would need to work out, one way or the other, as to who will be doing the programming, who's in charge of the programming, who has the key to the art gallery, to that, you know, those are the kind of details that we will need to work out. But in terms of programming of the space and any costs associated with that, Lennar is not on the hook.
The maintenance, the project overall has a variety of ongoing maintenance obligations, and the way that it's envisioned that these maintenance obligations will be carried out is they're supposed to be a master's association formed, similar to a homeowners' association between the, sorry, it's lots two through five, I can't remember what the building correlations are, that would take on those ongoing maintenance obligations, because this does run with the land.
Well, maintenance is one thing. I guess what I'm getting at is maybe beyond the scope of what has been considered, but the gallery's going to be operated by somebody, some, there are salaries that are going to have to be paid, there are, and there's ongoing exhibitions that'll have to be mounted, et cetera, et cetera. So is that envisioned as being something that happens that's outside of Lennar's responsibility? And then, if so, then how does it happen? And if they are not successful in soliciting an operator for the art gallery, do they have the, do they have the right to change the use of the space?
I can answer that, no. They are receiving bonus points for this, so it would need to continue to be an art gallery.
So Charlie Kiner-Jackson, my understanding of it, and it might just have been the total assumption on my part, is that this is a rent-free space, that there is not, there isn't a charge for leased space, and that it would most likely be run by volunteers of our local artist community, those who put on the art show every year, and that's kind of what I envisioned, is it's rent-free and it's labor-free, because it's run by an artist organization in town that works with volunteers.
The PDP condition states that public art gallery and community room, so design and construction of a 2,000-square-foot public art gallery and community room with walls at a height of no less than 15 feet and finishes appropriate for an art gallery, including 1,000 K amp service. The space shall include an office and a restroom, and shall be made available as a meeting room for residents and the local community upon request in advance and subject to reasonable rules and policies. No fee shall be charged for use of this space. The Emeryville celebration of the arts or any successor organization shall be granted 24-hour access to the space. So that is the condition of the PDP, and that is the parameters in which we would negotiate this operation and maintenance agreement.
So when you say no fee, that means also no rent, is that correct?
Right.
Right.
Thanks for clarifying that.
So I'll pick it up from here. So I'd like to bring to the commission an idea, and then just some discussion to see what the feeling is. So, we're having this issue of the two-inch reveal, four-inch reveal, and I can understand where they are, they're not that detailed yet, but yet we're seeing things that are leading us to believe that this is what we're going to see. So I'm wondering if we could add some language or something that would go to the effect that, you know, how about a condition of approval that states that staff can specify the revealed depth of particular windows, because as Arnold was saying, he's particularly interested in certain windows in certain areas. And so could we just say that there is, that we do a two-inch reveal upon city approval, that they don't feel a more, a deeper reveal is more appropriate?
What was that? Can you restate that?
It's kind of, it's kind of loose, and you guys can help me with this, but what I'm thinking is, I'm hearing that our city architect has concerns of particular spaces or places within the buildings that he feels that we need a bigger reveal. So I'm thinking that we can do a condition of approval that states that we, the reveals are at least two inches, except, or specified by the city architect where specific locations need to be deeper, something to that effect. Does that make sense to?
Through the chair, if I just may, these conditions are already there. If you look at page 22 of your condition of approval...
So where's the condition that we need to make, the condition that the reveals are at least four inches?
Uh, that's where...
I'm trying to lead on that two inches and letting us saying that, this is, this needs to be four inches.
So, yeah, so if you look at Condition F and G on page 22 of conditions of approval, Condition F kind of says a minimum of two inch everywhere, and then G identifies specific areas where four inch is what we are asking.
So gentlemen, is that, does that make sense to you, or does that still cause a problem? Okay, so while they're discussing that, the other, the other thing I want to go through the commission and talk about is this, since this language has come up in the city, and I've not been a supporter of this, and I've been very vocal about this, I have an issue with the term "local serving," with a retailer being "local serving," because I often find Target serves my local needs quite well, you know? So I think we're using the term "local serving" for what we want to be small, independent, and this may not be that big of an issue, because we're only talking to retailers in this, in this space. What I'm concerned with is that we're going to say, these have to be small, independent retailers, and we get into an economic climate when this project is done, that small, independent retailers can't afford to come here. So we sit with empty spots when Pete's is willing to open a spot here, but yet because of the way our verbiage of "local serving" is written, they're not allowed to come into here. So I don't know if it's an issue, because this isn't a shopping center, it's too small retail pads, but I'm just concerned with that. I don't like that term in one thing, and I don't think it's actually specifying what we really want in the space.
I have a question about, just a clarity question, because I was looking at the binder that we have here, and it says, "local serving means having a market area generally not exceeding one mile in radius."
Right.
Which isn't what we've talked about right now.
Yeah.
And so I'm like, okay, is it, is it literally one mile in radius? Because that's a pretty small...
That's the definition that's in our planning regulations. That is the term that is used to describe the desired uses in the neighborhood retail overlay. What that basically means, I mean, it's not super precise, but what it basically means is if someone were to do a market study for locating an establishment somewhere, how big of an area would they study? How big of an area would they anticipate their customers to come from? And, you know, when people do market studies, they do different radii for their market studies. I'm sure Target has a much bigger mark, market area study than, study area than Pete's, for that matter.
Well, doesn't, doesn't a one-mile radius cover the entire town of Emeryville?
Yeah, it does, but no, but yes, but what that means is that it's not a regional draw. It's not intended to be a regional draw, it's intended to be something that just serves the Emeryville community.
Well, and I think the term "serving" is where I have, it attracts.
Well, these are the terms that are defined in the planning regulations.
Right, and I've always had problems with that.
Okay, let me just point out that our conditions include a safety valve for this. This is the city council's concern, and like other things that are of concern to the city council, deviation would require council approval. For example, demolition of residential units requires council approval, because that's a priority for the council. In this case, this is a priority for the council, so the safety valve that we've built in is, if they can't do it, if they can't get, if it's empty and they can't get a local serving, small business to go in, the city council can approve another use in the space.
So if they wanted to...
Recommendation from you all.
Okay. What does that mean, that they have to go to the city council to ask?
That's correct.
For a different use?
Yes, that's right.
Or to bring in a vendor who is larger than local serving.
Right, that's right.
I mean, even if you're a large vendor, you're still serving the locale that you're in.
Thank you.
Well, right, I mean, as Commissioner Keller says, people from Emeryville do shop at Target, but I suspect that people from a lot farther away than Emeryville also shop at Target, so they have a one-mile market area, but they also have a much bigger market area. The idea is to restrict this to businesses that primarily have a one-mile market area. That's not to say that people don't come from beyond a mile, but...
It's just the business model, it's the thing we're getting...
Yeah, it's basically a business model, they're not trying to attract people from far away.
And because, my concern is because this, this, in my opinion, doesn't have enough mixed-use in retail particular. So what I want to see is that the two spaces we have get occupied, that once these buildings are built, that for three years, four years, we don't have an empty space sitting there.
Yes, we have a provision.
And I'm afraid that this is limiting us to reach people who could afford these rents and can run a business successfully.
That was the desire of the council on second reading of the PUD ordinance.
Charlie, I have a question. So can you talk a little bit more about the 50-employee, 55-employee threshold for small businesses? Does it mean that if there is not another business of the same company in Emeryville, that they would be able to locate in this space, even if it were a large chain, but they only, if they had less than 55 employees in that store?
I believe so. This is an issue that our Labor Standards people grapple with constantly, because the minimum wage, as you may know, is based on large businesses and small businesses, and each, they have different minimum wages. And so they have to keep tabs on every business in town and figure out which one is large and which one is small by this 55-employee standard. So basically, I guess it would be a simple matter, just to check the Labor Standards list to see if a particular business is considered large or small, and small ones would be allowed here, and the large ones wouldn't. But yeah, your point is well-taken, if it's, you know, some of the ones that are considered small for minimum wage may be large companies, but they only have 55 people in Emeryville. We're trying, it's kind of a delicate dance we're doing here, because we legally, there are legal issues with trying to regulate chain stores, and so we're going with what we've got on the books already, which is basically local serving and small businesses. Those are existing definitions that we've had for a while, and so we're just trying to tear off of what we already have.
Yeah.
And it's, if I'm understanding this correctly, those definitions don't preclude a chain store to actually move in unless they have other, you know, employees here...
There are more than 55 in Emeryville, that's right.
So I think the definitions kind of address your issue, Commissioner Keller, that, you know, chain stores, if a chain store didn't have other employees in Emeryville and didn't have 55 in this space, then they would still be able to...
Open.
...open here and meet our local needs and serve the local community, and...
Well, I think the problem with the wording is it says "local serving" and "small business", is that correct? Is that what it says?
Yes, both, we want both.
You want both.
Correct.
But I mean, you know, managing commerce through conditions of approval is certainly a blunt instrument at best.
And a slippery slope.
And what if it read, I mean, why does it have to be both? We're just talking now about the fact that some chain store that's not headquartered here could nonetheless move in there. That's, that's not a small business, that's a, that's a big business. Why can't it be local serving or small business?
And what is the definition of small business? How would we define that this company who owns...
55 or fewer employees in Emeryville.
Okay, so...
Our Labor Standards people have a list of these.
So that hits both of them, both the local serving and small business is measured by the 55 or less employees in Emeryville. Is that what I'm hearing?
They're different things, I mean, you could have a...
So that's what I'm trying to figure out, in order to rent a space here, they have to fill two things, they have to be local serving and small business.
Correct.
How are both of those things quantified? How do we know if someone is local serving and that they're a small business?
Well, for example...
By the definitions that we already have on the books that I just described.
Well, I've heard the 55 or under.
And a market area generally of one mile radius or less.
That's the local serving definition.
Okay.
So for example, to address Commissioner Keller's concern that if, it would be nice to have a Pete's coffee shop, for example, and we do have Pete's headquarters, and it's, it wouldn't, you know, I don't know how many employees do they have, but it could be more than 55. So all the employees of Pete's in Emeryville could be more than 55, and that would preclude by these definitions. However, we have, they can go to the planning, to the city council and ask... And that would preclude by these definitions. However, we have, uh, they can go to the planning, uh, to the city council and ask for an exception. It's not, you know, and it's, it's, so those kind of exceptions can be accommodated.
Let me explain a little further about why it's and instead of or. Let us suppose that you have a cafe or something that is, um, less than 55 people, employees, so it's small business. And if you say or, then they don't have to be local serving, they only have to be the small business, which they would be. I think, uh, Park's concern, as they have expressed throughout all the meetings we've had on these, uh, on this project, is they don't want a lot of traffic generated by people coming from a long way away. In other words, they don't want destination retail or destination cafes at this location. So if it's a small business, but we say or, then it doesn't have to be local serving, which means people can come from five, 10 mile, you know, it can be something that gets super successful and everybody comes from all over the place, which is what the neighborhood does not want. So that's why we said local serving and small business.
Well, yeah, it's, because what I'm thinking, I'm not only just thinking of food service, this city needs a bike shop. I particularly go to Mike's Bikes.
Same argument.
Mike, Mike's Bikes is all over the Bay Area. So to me, that is a big company, but with the definition of 55 or less employees, then they fit that, that model, so that would be fine. So that's what I was getting at.
That would be fine as long as their, uh, market area was less than a mile radius.
Yeah, maybe we can have a little bit of clarification on how you, how the city determines that a business has that one mile radius market area.
Well, to tell you the truth, we have not gotten into that, um, that much since these new regulations were adopted five years ago. That pertains primarily to the, um, as I said, the neighborhood retail overlay zone. And frankly, it's kind of a gut check thing. We, if we get an application for a store, we can generally tell if it's something that's gonna be attracting people from a long way away or if it's just a very local thing. But if we had to confirm it, we would ask them for their market studies and see how far out they went to, to determine what their market area was.
Is it feasible that a business that can stand business with a market share of a mile radius? I mean, that's not a lot of people within, you know, depending on what the item is. I mean, like a bike shop isn't gonna pull from everybody in town in Emeryville because not everyone bikes.
I'm not an economist, I can't really answer that.
I'm just saying that-
But I'm sure there are because you sometimes see things like coffee shops where there are many of the same brand of coffee shop, less than a mile apart.
Right.
So they must have a market area of less than a mile.
Right.
Dry cleaners.
So I-
Yeah.
Can, can I talk about TDM a little bit?
Mm-hmm, sure. I, I think we beat that horse.
So, no, I just, I, I did actually wanna, wanna talk about Park's comments and the question about formalizing and just because, because we've been talking about what some of the conditions are. And so that issue of, um, you know, formalizing a commitment, formalizing a shared parking strategy, I think it actually ties into this reveal question too. It's a question of sort of where they are in process and when you get to formalize things. Is there an opportunity here to formalize some elements around TDM? Or are they already formalized in the conditions?
So there is a provision where these details will be formalized, but it will not come in front of the planning commission.
Okay, because it'll be more operational.
Right. So, uh, yeah. I would also like to, um, kind of direct, uh, direct your attention to the parking. If we go to a condition, uh, page, uh, page 14 of conditions of approval. It kind of describes what parking, uh, Lennar is supposed to provide. And apart from, uh, the minimum number of parking spaces for the residential units, the condition says a minimum of 117 spaces in building B2 to accommodate parking for office use in building 131. A minimum of 67 resident guest parking spaces shall be provided in building B2. The resident guest parking and office parking may be shared. A minimum of 36 parking spaces shall be provided on the ground floor for the general public in building B2. So this is just to clarify that those, uh, spaces for public, and this was something that Park wanted. It's not our requirement, it's not a city requirement, but Park wanted a public parking and Lennar complied and this is the amount. And this public parking will not be used by resident guest parking. So I just wanted to clarify that, that the guests, so the general public will not be competing either with the office workers or, uh, resident guests, uh, with the public parking.
And I think it's important to understand the distinction between shared parking and public parking. Um, I think there's been some confusion about this. I think perhaps some people have considered shared parking to mean the same thing as public parking. So there, as Miru says, there are 36 public parking spaces that are not used by the project at all. And then in addition to that, there are, I guess, 117 spaces that are shared between the office use and the guest parking.
Can I ask, what square footage of office does that serve?
Seventy-four thousand square feet.
A hundred and seventeen spaces. So what does that work out to per thousand?
So-
Do you have?
So it's, you know, the parking, uh, the parking demand estimate is, uh,
Two point four.
Two point four. And if you look at the staff report, page, um, page 11 of staff report, uh, it's outlined how it's broken down by resident parking, office parking, retail parking, gallery parking, and then, uh, yeah.
So the, the, to clarify further, the, um, it's a little bit complicated, but, uh, the parking requirement is based on the estimated demand. Then for commercial uses, we take out the first 1,500 square feet so that small retail spaces don't have to provide parking if they're less than 1,500 square feet. And then the minimum is one-third less than that and the maximum is, uh, 10% more than that. So the range for the required office is 117 to 191. And they're providing the minimum of 117.
And of that 117, is it 67 are gonna be also guest spaces?
Well-
For the, for the residential units?
They're required to provide 67 guest spaces, but the guest, the 67 guests can use any of the 117 office spaces.
Right.
Right, is that right?
So the, the comments that were made by the public about parking this evening, how, how would you respond to those, to that concern that they have?
I'm a little unclear on exactly what the concern is, but I would say that in addition to these shared spaces that are for the use of the project and its tenants and its guests, there are also 36 spaces that are, technically, they're not shared spaces, they're just flat out public parking spaces.
And, and I think that's some good clarification, um, because I think one of the numbers before was the, the 34 shared spaces, but that, that's actually saying that it's 36, it's public, and then it's in the hundreds for-
Right.
Shared and that there are these elements to it, yeah.
That's correct.
And can I just add one more data point? One thing that was not also covered in there, there's approximately 25 new street spaces on the new Hubbard and 46th that we will have that will be open to the public as well. But that's not inside the garage, but it's just a more, uh, general parking.
I was gonna ask about that, thank you.
And then so, can I come back to Commissioner Keller's discussion about the four inches versus the two inches? Because we, we actually had some time to do some homework here and we wanna just make sure that everybody understood. And I think hopefully this will help clarify. So actually, as the condition is written, Ron, do you wanna come up here real quick? So if we look at the specific sheet that Arnold has referenced.
Here, let me, I've gotten the sheets in one place that might be easier than flipping.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we can just show it right here.
Okay, you just wanna show one or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think it's, which one is SP 15, is that the easiest, Ron?
Sure.
So it's really, um, Ron, do you wanna talk about it more?
So I, I, ooh, oh, I did that down.
Yeah, we did it now.
Jumped it.
Now it's gonna go, so I gotta go slow.
Yeah, go slow. There we go.
Okay.
Can I zoom in?
I tried.
We'll go to the view.
Oh, there you go.
All right, here, let's try this.
Oh, braves. Okay.
All right, there we go.
So clearly in our renderings, we have a larger offset between the plaster and the brick columns. And we would likely fur those out and we will get the intent of what is being asked for. And so, um, I guess the biggest heartburn that we have when it says a minimum, like even a return brick is three and a half inches, it's just slightly under four. And so if we're gonna use a minimum, just to be precise, we'd rather it be three or we'd rather it be approximate. It's just, that is, that is the biggest thing. So we will have everywhere the two inch offset to glass, but then in these key locations that, that have been pointed out, we will have a larger offset as, as the intent is between pilasters and the, um,
And the plaster.
And the, and the, the brick. And then there's some other areas, uh, I'm getting down, I can't go to the next.
Oh, you wanna go to the next slide?
Sure. Like at the gallery, there is the, the white inset, you know, so we, there's a couple of things that we're doing. We are framing the windows, so that creates a deeper reveal and then go, oh, no, that way. And then we have that area. And so, um, how we deal with that, I don't know exactly what that reveal is, but it will be deeper than, um, two inches, we know that. So, um, we feel more confident with three inches as a minimum or, or approximately four. It's just, it's, I know we're splitting fractions of an inch, you know, and so at the end of the day, with, with framing, it's like, well, we're just off by a little. And so that's just-
So I guess, yeah, so, long story short, I think Ron's saying, hey, our proposal is a minimum of three or approximately four.
If you have the one, the ones that you've indicated in a group, can we just flip through them?
Well, while you're here, this image you're showing us, the metal panel and then there's a recessed, I guess that's brick, is that right?
Stucco.
Yes.
Stucco. How far back is that?
I might have to look at the plans. The lower level is in, the lower level is inset further.
Well, I'm asking about that particular.
So these are the, I guess these are the sheets in question. And so I guess that it's more about not from the glazing to the exterior, it's more about as you tran, right, is it, as you transition from material to material? Or as you get to the, to the, to the top of the, the cornice details?
Yeah, and then all, yes, and so like particularly on this building, you know, it may be that, you know, ultimately this is better to be two inches and then this is four inches, or maybe these actually are better two inches than four inches. They may change, so having a blanket statement is, is difficult. But the intent is to do exactly what we're showing. And so obviously this building
Change?
Has quite a, a lot of variation. So you have a deeper recess. So yeah, this is an interesting kind of thing here.
Well, gentlemen, just to focus what we're trying to do, what I'm trying to do is get language that you guys can agree with, that the city can support, that we can approve tonight. The details I don't find important. What I wanna find out is the language that you guys can accept, that the city can approve and that we can move this project through, because this seems to be a real sticking point. So, and if you're asking for a three inch as a minimum and a staff is saying that's okay, then we can change the conditions of approval to say that and we can go ahead and vote for this.
Well, okay.
Charlie and I are okay with a minimum of three where it says a minimum of four.
That's pretty good negotiation.
On that note, just to throw a wrench in it, so like what you see here, you get a, pretty much a flush condition where you have the panels coming down to the window. So then you won't have the offset, but you, the whole window is set back, the whole wall is moving back and forth. So it, it's unclear. I think the intent is to have an increased offset.
Ron, just go back to that exact window you were pointing to. So you're, the, the rendering you're showing us there, the depth of the window itself, the frame depth,
Yeah.
looks like it's about four inches. And I think what the staff has been saying, and I think it's actually cogent for every project that we have to deal with, the staff is saying, hey, you're showing us something and we're voting on it because we like the way it looks. And, and then we want you to build what you're showing us. So, you know, you came in with a super deep window frames here. And now, do we wanna hold you to something that's going to, you know, break the bank? No. We want you to build the project successfully, et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, for us as commissioners, the staff is doing us the service of, uh, you know, pointing out that these, these depths have been presented to us artistically in, in this rendering. So, you know, somewhere in there, there's gotta be a, there's gotta be language that really, the, the best language is what you already agreed to, which is that you will conform to the intent of what you have shown us.
Yes. And in those locations, we will have an increased offset per the renderings. And, you know, and it could be approximately four inches. And in some areas, like particularly here, it's, it's quite a bit larger in some areas. So it, it's, it's just-
Well, and so maybe going back to Commissioner Keller's concept of, let's cut to the chase here. It sounds like if, if staff's okay with three, I think we could live with three. Hopefully, maybe the commissioners can, can do the same and we can, we can discuss other items.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I think that would solve that issue.
Okay.
I'm wondering if maybe we can do something where we have a minimum of three, but include language that would give staff the ability to ask for more in areas where they feel like the intent is to have a very deep recess. But I'm not sure what that language would be, um, where it would be something that can be codified, but flexible.
Well, um,
I thought I was asking her-
On further consultation with Arnold, we have another suggestion, which is that, when, and we're talking about condition G at the bottom of page 22. Instead of saying, shall be offset four inches, we could say approximately four inches, as determined by the community development director.
Would, would three inches be approximate enough?
Four inches.
I know.
Oh, three inches. Oh, would that be approximate enough?
Yes.
That's the problem.
Well, you could say up to four inches also.
No, I think they want a four as a minimum.
Yeah.
Is, is, they want at least a-
We could say a minimum of three and preferably four inches at the discretion of the-
I just think we should say a minimum of three and then you guys work out the other details beyond that, like-
That, okay.
We have both.
That's fine.
I wanna give you guys the freedom, because if there's particular areas that Arnold is concerned about, that you tell them, no, this is an area we want to see four inches.
My preference, my preference would be approximately four and let staff decide whether three is approximate enough. Yes.
Or, I, I mean, so to Charlie's point, I think, because what we're trying to do is avoid that kind of interpretation at a later date. So maybe the, the whole idea, concept of a minimum of three and preferably more as, as, uh-
At the discretion of the director.
Yeah. No, and, and I, I think it's a good question about commitment, you know, in, in the sense that-
Yeah, or best efforts to add to, for deeper.
Yeah, but I think, I think it's sort of, it does two things in the sense that it, you came to this meeting with two and it makes you commit more, three.
Right.
But it still gives you discretion. Um, and so, so I think I'm comfortable with that middle ground.
So baseline of three, best efforts to increase.
Got that, Charlie?
Well, what I have is at certain locations, the minimum offset shall be three inches and preferably up to four inches, right?
What if five is better?
No, I think up to, up to four sets a maximum, right? Which, which we don't wanna-
Okay, how about this? Let's just leave it at three and preferably more.
And preferably more, yeah.
Yeah. And preferably more.
Best efforts to increase the, the recess.
Yeah, exactly. Best efforts to increase the recess.
So you know you've succeeded when you've got the planning commission arguing about window recesses.
About an inch.
And advertising, they call that a monkey paw.
All right, let's see. Certain locations, minimum offset shall be three inches and preferably more with best efforts to increase the recess at the discretion of the director?
Fine. You're a fair person, Charlie. We know you'll do good.
Yeah, I'm worried about Miru.
Oh, yeah, me too.
Write it in that, that Charles Bryant will be needed.
Yeah, yeah. So has all the parking issues been addressed? So, and are there any other conditions of approval we have questions on or wanting to change? approval we have questions on, or wanting to change, or? I'm ready to make a motion, then, that we approve this project with a refined condition, what, Andrea?
Subject to
Subject to those conditions we just modified.
So, to clarify, were there any other modifications, besides the ones I just read, and the ones that are in the memo that Miru handed out?
Correct. As long as we've addressed the parking issues that part brought up tonight, those seem to have been addressed already.
We believe they are.
Okay. So that will be my motion.
Okay. Would anybody like to second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
All right. Are we ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, and we're all clear on what we're voting on? All right, good. Commissioner Banta?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Barrera?
Aye.
For ayes, the application is approved, this decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
Good job, everyone, thank you.
Charlie, should somebody go get Gail?
She's right there.
Hi, Gail.
We have a lot of stuff open here.
Well, it's an interesting, interesting set of
Are we doing annual planner part?
Conditions. I mean, I think it's, you know, in, in this day and age, when you can make anything look wonderful, it is nice to be held.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the update on our general plan.
Yes, another year has flown by, and we're going to talk about implementation of the general plan, and the housing element, and the housing successor report, including land use, transportation, parks, facilities and services, urban design, conservation, safety and noise, and sustainability. In terms of land use this year, the planning regulations were amended to address cannabis businesses, and short-term rentals, and accessory dwelling units. And the Heritage Square Garage and Retail Building was completed. Building permits were issued for the Marketplace Theater Site D Residential, and the Parcel B Garage and Retail, and for Estrella Vista at 3706 Affordable Family Housing. And we have building permit applications for, at the Marketplace, the Park, and the Parks, Parcel C Residential Project. In terms of transportation, the city received measure VB funding from Alameda County Transportation Commission for the South Bayfront Pedestrian Bicycle Bridge, parking management, the Emery Go Round, bike share stations, and eight-to-go paratransit. And Caltrans approved the mid-block crossing at Pack and Save. In terms of, yeah, they did. Parks, facilities and services, the Greenway construction between Powell and Stanford was still under construction at the end of the year, but I think now it's done. The ECL Teen Center opened, Sherwin-Williams Open Space Parks Plan was approved, and several personal emergency preparedness classes were taught. And community events were held in the parks, Spring Carnival, Independence Day, jazz concerts, Harvest Fair, and here, the holiday tree lighting. In terms of urban design, art was installed at ECL. And accessory dwelling units, granny units, were made easier to build, and a usable yard area was required. And on Shellbound Street, it was realigned to have buildings on both sides as part of the Marketplace redevelopment. A call was issued for art at the Marina, and the staff began to set up a program for murals. In terms of conservation, safety and noise, all apartments, new apartments are now required to have their own water meters, so the city met with East Bay Mud about that. The city worked with the county to hold a LED safe renovation training. The facade improvement grant program was revived, and the city started a green infrastructure plan for stormwater, and the city is continuing to convert streetlights to LEDs. In terms of sustainability, waste reduction, that is recycling programs, were promoted at the schools and commercial properties, and the city got money from PG&E for efficient lights at the senior center and the Glass House Garage. And the mayor signed a recommitment to the Global Council of Mayors, that's part of the Paris Climate Agreement. And now Catherine can talk about the housing element implementation, because she's who does it.
Thank you. So the housing element is, is developed to, so to show how we're going to meet our regional housing need allocation, the RENA. And, so that we're going to talk about that today, we're talking about implementing the programs in the housing element, and just briefly, the housing successor report, the housing successor to the redevelopment agency is the city of Emeryville, and every year we have to report to the state on how we're, what we're doing with those housing successor As you know, Estrella Vista is under construction and moving quite well. It's 70 very low, 16 low, and one market rate for 87 total units, family units, with seven four-bedroom units, so we're starting to expand our large household inventory. The Marketplace Cedar Site at Shellmount is under construction, it has 11 very low, 14 moderate, and 198 market rate units. So this is, this is sort of an analysis of how we're doing on our RENA. And we have permitted 86 very low-income units, 16 low-income units, 21 moderate-income units, and 380 above moderate-income units, for a total of 503. So we've gotten, not half, we're not halfway through yet, but as you can see from this slide, we've done, even though we're 39% through the period, we've done 31% of the very low-income units, we are required to do 7% of the low, 8% of the moderate. We're at 50% of above moderate, and we're at 33% of total. I expect this to change throughout the years, however, the reason why we're very, done very well on the very low, is because of Estrella Vista, 87 units, that almost entirely are very low-income. We won't have another big project like that, probably during the reporting period, so, but we should get pretty far. The map site inventories has changed a little bit, mostly because we actually have, since the time we started the housing element, and now we actually have projects under construction. So I'm not going to go through every single implementation, because there's 47, something like that, but just highlight a few. So we are expanding the services that we are making available to people experiencing homelessness, including families and singles. One of the things that we did this year is we, we, we started through a whole countywide process, there's northern, now something called the Northern Count, North County Family Front Door, and that's sort of a virtual front door for families experiencing homelessness, or at risk of experiencing homelessness, and we help fund that. We issued an RFP for 4300 San Pablo for a senior housing project, however, it's postponed because, once we issued the RFP, we got some feedback from developers, that it wasn't really feasible with the number of units that were allowed under the zoning. So we are undertaking a process to upzone a particular area, and that will be, that project will be coming back. We joined Berkeley and Albany in the North County Homeless Hub. I just want to point out, the family front door is Berkeley, Albany, Oakland, and Piedmont, but the homeless hub is just Berkeley, Albany, and City of Emeryville. We supported state funding for affordable housing, and this year we got some, which is great. And we participated in Sunshare's solar discount program. And we are continuing to do work on providing services to people experiencing homelessness in our community, out in the community. And, gonna skip a few of these, because they're just things that we do all the time. So, funding for affordable housing, we're trying to, wait, what is going on with this slide? So, we try and ask developers to provide as many units as possible when we have a market rate, we have a density bonus program, we have all sorts of programs to try and encourage developers, or require developers to provide affordable housing. We are using our housing assets, we received housing impact fees last year of over a million dollars, was then turned around and used in the Estrella Vista project, so we don't actually have a backlog of funds in that program. We still use 20% of, the boomerang funds are available to affordable, for affordable housing, and we get a small amount of urban county community development block grants that we use for rehabs, owner-occupied rehabs. So now we're moving on to the housing successor report, we have $1.6 million approximately of income from the housing successor, which is fairly high, I don't expect to have that kind of income every year, but we did have a year with a lot of income. We only spent during 2017, $83,000, but that's because 2.35 million of the existing funds, both the income from this year and previous year's incomes, are allocated to Estrella Vista. So next year, when you see this, that, that spending number will be significantly larger. The real property held by the former, from the housing successor is worth about $18 million, and we have about $800,000 in loans and grants receivable. The housing successor sites are the 3707, 3706 San Pablo, which is the Estrella Vista project, under construction, and we are in pre-development for three of the remaining sites, which are 6150 Christie, 5890, and 5900 Christie, and 3602 Adeline, which is a very small site. And, any questions or comments?
When, you're referring to the projects that are in pre-development, those are not counted, they're, they're not in a position yet to be counted in our RENA, or
You can't count the RENA until you issue a building permit. And so there are, all the marketplace, the marketplace projects that haven't gotten a building permit, those haven't been counted. Any permits that will be coming through, Sherwin-Williams have not been counted, and then we have a couple of little projects that will have one or two units that have not been counted, because they haven't been issued building permits. But we do have some bigger projects that are in the pipeline, where we'll get approximately 12% of those units, 10 to 12% of those units will be affordable. But nothing like Estrella Vista, where we have 87.
Do you have a sense of where that will put us on the percentages for the low and the moderate income?
We, I, I expect we'll get to, close to 50% by the end of the nine-year period.
Does the senior housing count in any of that? The one that we're trying to develop, is that affordable housing?
That will be all very low-income housing.
Okay, so that would be also
And it's, but it's not a very big project, it's only about 30 units, so
Even if, even when it's upzoned, it'll only be 30 units? Wow.
It's a small site.
Chair Donaldson, if I may, point out that the project that you just approved will include 20 very low-income units, 30 low-income units, and 80, and 35 moderate-income units. So that will help.
We'll get there.
Good.
Could, could you, I'll go back to the slide where you had all the different units, it was like an, early on in your presentation?
This one, or the other one?
I think it's this one here, yeah. So, when you, when it, above moderate, is that, what does that mean exactly?
Those are market rate project, housing units that have no restrictions.
So, so the, the, the target we've been given is about 1,500 units by, by the state, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And, or whoever.
It's a process.
So, it's a nine-year period, they said we're about 39% through, and we've got 500, or about a third of the target that we're going for, about 1,000 left. So, have you mapped out, like, what you anticipate could be generated in terms of number of units, given the likely sites?
I have sort of back of the envelope, we, I actually keep track of units in the pipeline, and what I think the affordability. Remember that some of these projects can just pay the impact fee, they don't have to build the units. The unit is an in lieu production requirement, in lieu of paying the fee. So it's, for the most part, the developers have so far chosen to do the in lieu production requirement, for instance, Sherwin-Williams has made that decision. But there's no guarantee that in the future that will happen, but I do sort of keep a back-of-the-envelope analysis. We'll obviously meet our above moderate number, that won't be a problem.
Yeah.
And our moderate number, I expect to go up, because, because in our density bonus program, and our in lieu production requirement program has more moderate than these 100% affordable housing projects. So when you go here, that's why I'm saying the, the low and the moderate, I expect to catch up to the very low, because of the way our programs work. The way we actually developed our programs was to find a balance in, and, and we actually, our density bonus program, and our impact fee program, are, the production requirements, affordable housing production requirements for those match the RENA requirements. And, and then in addition to that, we do 100% affordable housing projects, which is why the very low sort of is, is always going to be a little bit, hopefully will always be a little bit ahead of the low and moderate.
So, is there any consequence to not achieving the goal that RENA has set out?
Yes, there are. There is, in recent legislation, there is quite a bit of, so for instance, we are now subject to SB 35, because we're not on track to meet our RENA numbers, which is a streamlining and by right housing program. There is legislation currently in the, at the state, that will have even more broader implications for jurisdictions that don't meet their RENA. Some of the, of the funding that's available, is available for people who are meeting their RENA, or not meeting their RENA. But it's, it's sort of an interesting, sometimes they say, there's a percentage cutoff, like if you're meeting your RENA in this affordability, or if you're close to meeting RENA in this affordability, then you, you know, there's this consequence, or this, this incentive. So generally, Emeryville is in the top 5% of RENA, in the, in the nine-county area, A-Bex nine-county area. So we usually are ahead, because of our, our programs are pretty progressive. But a lot of cities have now, now have impact fees, and because the Palmer decision has been, there's been some state legislation to protect cities who have inclusionary zoning, we'll see cities putting more inclusionary zoning on their ordinances on, so I think we'll be, still be ahead of most cities. And sometimes the funding is really about who's doing better, not, did you meet it? But SB 35 is a, did you meet it, number.
So the, the in lieu fees that you referred to, those are fees that are paid instead of, of building the units?
No, it's the other way around. We have impact fee, we did a nexus study, and you must, the impact of you producing housing or commercial space, the, the need for housing that is caused by that development, you have to pay the cost of producing that housing, in a per-unit, in the, in the residential, it's per-unit, in the commercial, it's per-square foot. So there is a cost, you are paying the nexus between the, what your new development is causing the, a housing need, the housing need that's caused by your new development. That's how, that's how you get to the impact fee, you're paying the impact. Then, we have an in lieu production requirement. So if you don't want to pay the fee, and the fees do, at building permit, Charlie?
Right.
At building permit, which means you're paying financing charges on those fees, you have to, you have to borrow that mu, you know, developers would borrow money to pay the fee, they'd pay interest during the whole construction period, and then, so, so there's sort of an incentive for developers to do the in lieu production, because they're just, it's just the way the financing works. So the in lieu production then is, if you choose not to pay, then you must produce this percentage of units at this income level, this coming level, or this income level.
I see.
Chair Donaldson? May I? Clarify something here? The, the in lieu production, in a, as opposed to paying the fee for residential projects, only applies if a project does not require bonuses. only applies if a project does not require bonuses. If the project is at the base level of everything, FAR height and residential density, then they must pay the affordable housing impact fee. They have an option, as Catherine said, of providing the units in the project at a rate of 12%. I believe it is 8% moderate and 4% low, or something like that. But if a project requires a bonus, any bonus at all, then they are required to provide the affordable units in the project. And since we've adopted the bonus system, we have not had any, at least any large projects come in that did not require a bonus. So Sherwin-Williams, for example, didn't have an option. They could not pay the fee. They had to provide the project, the units in the project because they got, they needed 100 bonus points.
So that impact fee that these, these applicants are paying, that goes to a housing fund?
Goes to the Affordable Housing Impact Fee Fund.
Right.
We talked about that.
Is that the 17 or 18 million dollars you're talking about?
There you go.
1.1 million.
1.133, yeah.
So, and that money is sooner or later going to be used to create more units, or what?
Correct. So this, this particular money, most of it.
Went to the.
A million dollars of it, I think, just a million dollars of it was, went to subsidize the building of Estrella Vista.
Got it.
And actually, if I recall correctly, that money was collected in 2016. The, the affordable housing impact fee on the transit center, the Emery, Emery Station West project, was about a million dollars. And we just turned around and gave that to Estrella Vista. But that would not be included in this report because that, that was the prior year.
Well, yeah. I don't think that's.
No.
I think the, well, it was actually collected in 2017, I think. Well, anyway, what we had at the onset of the Estrella Vista in the Housing Impact Fee Fund was 1.13 million, and 1 million of it was loaned to Estrella Vista to subsidize the development of that project.
That's like an interest-free loan.
Sorry?
It's like an interest-free loan or something similar?
It is not an interest-free loan, however, it is a loan that they have to pay if they have excess proceeds. So. Any other questions?
Yeah, do the accessory dwelling units get counted in your RENA numbers?
Yes.
Well, if they have an affordability agreement, just because.
No, as a market rate unit, yes, they do.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
As above market, that's correct. Yeah, they get counted, they're a unit, they're a housing unit, so.
So if they have, what, what were you saying, Dan, if they have an affordable?
They would get counted as a non-market rate unit if they had an affordability agreement, but they probably wouldn't.
Okay.
So they would be counted as a market.
As just a market rate, okay.
So all of these units, the very low, the low, and the moderate have affordability agreements that are on title that say these units must be rented at these rents.
Any other questions?
One other question. I see that the mayor has signed the recommitment to the Paris Climate Agreement. So is, is the planning commission going to be required to go to Paris to sign?
I like the way you think.
That would be good.
Cat's out of the bag on that one, they've already gone to Paris.
All right. Okay, well, if there are no other questions, we make a recommendation that.
Would you like to take public comment?
Sorry about that. Public comment, is there anybody from the public wishing to speak on this? Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment period.
There's no resolution before you, we're just looking for your comments.
Okay.
We need a motion.
I'm glad to see that we're on track moving forward with the affordable units and always wish there would be more.
By the way, I think it was a pretty impressive report. There are so many initiatives that were accounted for here and described and noted. It's obviously a lot of work and a lot of ongoing projects to be managing.
And I think our staff does a great job at that. So in looking at this, it looks like for cities small as where, we accomplished a lot. I mean, so, and it's probably hard to quantify, but how do we look against other cities? Are we a little bit more successful at our programming, or are we pretty much normal with the Bay Area cities?
Well, I, I mean, we're only halfway, or a third of the way through the period.
Not even just the housing, but everything that we're doing.
Oh, we're way better.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I would just say with, with regard to the RENA, if you, if you look at our RENA, you know, 1,500 approximately, it's not a huge number, but we're only one square mile, right? If you take every city in the Bay Area and take their RENA number and divide that number by the square miles of that city, Emeryville is by far the highest. We have the highest RENA per square mile, higher, about almost twice as high as San Francisco.
What's this Albany? I'd like to know just what Albany's required.
I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I know Piedmont is like 60.
Yeah, I could have figured that.
I, I imagine Albany somewhere in between, probably a few hundred.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, so the formula for assigning RENA is very contentious, and Emeryville has a jobs housing imbalance that other cities, other than San Francisco and, and now a lot of cities in the South Bay, don't have. So that, that impacts the RENA numbers that we get.
RENA allocation is a black box, basically. It's kind of a mystery.
Yeah.
Was someone going to make a motion that our city is better than every other city?
I think you just did.
I think that goes without saying.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent job. I'm also really glad to see all of the transportation funds that have come our direction, that's a good thing too.
I'm going to excuse myself.
All right, well, have a safe drive.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Okay, the last item on our public hearing agenda is the Rochambeau Cannabis Retail Dispensary.
This is a major use permit for, to allow a cannabis retail dispensary in our town. The applicant is Rochambeau Inc., and the landowner of the space where this dispensary will go is indicated here. I'm not quite sure how that's, that's pronounced, but I'm going to go ahead and say Joson Photo LLC. I just want to correct for the record that the agenda that was sent out to the neighborhood that included owner but did not specify landowner, so there was a little bit of a confusion regarding who Joson, what entity this was. So I just wanted to clarify that typically when we send out agendas, the owner is the landowner and not the owner of the business. So the owner of the business here, Rochambeau, is Rochambeau, and Joson Photo is the landowner of the condo, commercial condo that Rochambeau is going to move in. So this is a, one of the spaces in the Endante complex at the corner of Fortieth and San Pablo, and where you see the green oval, that's where the unit lies. As you can see, there's a restaurant at the corner, and there is a barber shop on, to the south, and there is a tax office to the north. The one right here, I believe, is vacant, so number of commercial uses here. Just to remind the commission, the city council, when they were, last year, when the council and the commission were talking about considering what kind of cannabis activities they wanted in our city, the council decided that cannabis manufacturing would be allowed in certain parts, and there would be no limit to the number of permits that the city will issue for cannabis manufacturing. However, for the retail dispensaries, the council wanted to limit that and, and then select the, select the business owners who would be able to establish these dispensaries. So they had an RFP selection process, and on September 5th, the council selected two entities, and one of them was Rochambeau, and the other is East Bay, East Bay Therapeutics. So you will see, come before you two retail dispensaries. The first one is today, and we have not yet received an application from the second, the second entity that was selected by the city council.
I have a question. Are we allowed to approve two use permits for the, to dispensaries from the RFP if, you know, we agree with their applications?
So, right. So the, the RFP selection process identified owners who have the right to apply for the use permit. That does not mean that the commission has to approve the use permit, obviously, but it had to be Rochambeau and East Bay Therapeutics who will be, whose applications I would take in.
And if we agree with both applications, we would be able to approve this one and then approve the next one that came in from the East Bay Therapeutics company?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yeah. So there'll be two use permits that we have in the city to give for retail cannabis.
Thank you.
So Rochambeau was, received the highest score of the seven applicants that responded to the RFP. And as part of their application, Rochambeau indicated that it would provide several community benefits, which include things like 1% public program, which includes 1% of employee time, volunteered at Ecap, 1% of the gross sales community fund, in which 70% of this fund will be given, distributed to the city, and the remaining 30% would be distributed to Ecap. They would also be giving medical cannabis to eligible low income patients. They would be providing veterans and senior discounts. They will do public safety educational campaigns. They will also be supporting the victims of war on drugs by holding fundraisers at their site. And the site will also be a venue where local artists would showcase their artwork for sale and without charge to the artists. And it also involves capital improvement for Ecap. In addition to that, they have also volunteered to do neighborhood cleanup, including trash pickup around the site and at the bus stop on the eastbound Fortieth Street. So in terms of the specifics, the space is about 2,200 square feet at 3996 San Pablo Avenue. And Rochambeau is owned by the same group as Berkeley Spacience Group, which have been doing business, medical cannabis business since 1999. And you'll hear more about that background when the applicant comes and gives his presentation. So in terms of uses that will be allowed at this dispensary, obviously there'll be onsite sale of different kinds of cannabis products. There'll be onsite pickups, so you would be allowed, there would be the option for folks to order online and then come and pick up their, their products at the store. There will be onsite tasting bar that will exclude smoking and vaping. So just, and again, the applicant will also discuss a little bit more, but I want to kind of clarify what a tasting bar is. The idea is that it is literally giving tastings of different edibles that they have at the facility, so that it allows you to taste a product without committing to, you know, buying a whole bar of chocolate, so to speak. And, but that will not include smoking any product or vaping any product on the premises. And they will also be doing home deliveries. They expect to have about 20 employees and approximately 300 customers per day. There are 90 parking spaces reserved for all the retail users in the complex, and the total number of retail space is about 14, nearly 15,000 square feet, which includes the restaurant, and I'll go into parking in a little bit. The hours of operation are 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, which is consistent with the state law. I don't believe they expect to start that early, but we are not putting any restrictions other than what you see. And the deliveries will be restricted between 8:00 AM and 7:00 PM. So this is their site, so Fortieth Street on the top, San Pablo Avenue at the bottom. At the corner, you have the Milsin Restaurant. So this is the spot that, the unit that they will be occupying. The entry to the garage is off Adeline Street, so this is where the garage entrance is. So you would park your car at the first or the second level, and then walk through this route, come out, and then enter in. This is pretty much the access for all the retail users along San Pablo Avenue. So when you are going back to your car, you walk around the block and enter your, enter the garage. In terms of trash, there is an existing locked trash receptacle that is shared by different users, and, and Rochambeau will be using this facility. And there is a red zone here that allows, you know, waste management to come and pick up trash from, from the receptacle here. This is what it looks like along the San Pablo frontage. This is the entry to the garage of Adeline. This is the, the interior photograph of the space. And there, they will obviously be making some tenant improvements inside their facility. So there would be a lobby, there are two gates, and there's a lobby, and there would be a security guard at the entrance who would be checking the identifications of anybody entering the facility. Then you have the retail counter, there's the tasting bar here, there are a couple of vending machines, and, and an ATM machine. These are existing bathrooms that are there to serve the retail spaces in the facility. And obviously, there's a vault and a workroom space. And I believe the applicant will show some other pictures of renderings of what they imagined the interiors to be. So in terms of conformity to the regulations, this is in the mixed-use residential south zone where cannabis retail is permitted. It also lies in the overlay zones of neighborhood retail, transit hub, and pedestrian priority zone. None of these zones have any land use or design provisions applicable to this proposal. There's no change in floor area ratio, there's no change in building height, and there is no change in parking. So the whole complex, the mixed-use Endante complex, which includes the condos, the residential condos and the commercial on the ground floor, has a use permit that was approved earlier. It's, it's, the use permit date is 2000, 2000, but it was probably approved a year later. So at that time, about, like I said, under 1,500 square feet of retail space was proposed, and that triggered 56 spaces, according to the planning code, planning requirements then. Today, the same amount of space would trigger about 37. And what they are providing is 90 for, for the retail commercial uses in the garage, so they meet their, all the parking requirements and exceeded.
So that's all for the entire building?
Correct, the 90 spaces for the entire retail.
Retail.
Yeah, yeah. So you have to make your standard CUP findings. We believe that these findings can be made. This is a new retail type activity that will provide, add to the economic diversity of the city. The project will be using an existing vacant retail commercial space that has been vacant for about a year, and it is compatible, compatible with other commercial uses along San Pablo. And the project complies with the applicable zoning regulations, and there are conditions of approval, which, including bicycle requirements and the performance standards that we have included in all the cannabis applications. In terms of conditions of approval, just to clarify, in my first slide, I walked you through a list of community benefits. Not all of them have been converted into conditions of approval for the use permit. The reason why this is, because the conditions of approval go with the land, and a lot of the community benefits are tied to the entity. So those community benefits, which are not included here, will be covered by the operating permit that this facility will need to get from the police department. Because the operating. Because the operating permit is the permit that is given to the business entity and not to the land. But there's...
So those are the conditions that applied to the hours of service and the donations and help support for Ecap and the capital contribution to Ecap?
Correct. So those will be included in, so what, or to put it this way, these are the ones that are included in the use permit. The requirement that they display local artists free of charge is included in, as a condition of approval, because it's kind of goes with the land. The requirement that they need to hold fundraisers in order to raise money for Ecap is in the use permit, and the requirement for sidewalk maintenance and trash pickup near the bus stop is also included in the conditions of approval of the use permit. All the money related, and if you wish, I can go back to that slide, which...
And the fundraisers are, the fundraiser has a specific organization designated on it, is that?
Ecap, isn't it?
War on Drugs at the Property?
That's, I mean, the fundraisers are for Ecap.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, no, sorry. No, the condition says that the applicant may house fundraisers to benefit organizations that support victims of the war on drugs at the property. Basically, we just wanted to make sure that it, it was clear that it was going to be an allowed use at the site. The operator's permit will specify the organizations. That way, in the event that those organizations cease to exist, or their mission changes, those organizations could be substituted for another one that supports victims who, victims from the war on drugs. So the, the point of the CUP condition is just to make sure that the fundraising use is allowed. Operator's permit will put in the specifics about the organizations to benefit from the fundraisers.
So, yeah, so these are the three community benefits which are memorialized in the use permit here. In addition to that, we have included a wayfinding signage requirement and the customer, customer information regarding the parking. This is a tricky issue, it's, it's not obvious where the parking is for the potential customers. So there's a condition of approval which requires them to advertise them, advertise the location of the parking, be at their websites, or give that information out to the customers who are coming in. There's also wayfinding signage, so once you are parked inside, especially if you're coming for, for the first time, it is not necessarily all, you know, very clear as to where to go. So there's a requirement saying there should be some signage directing folks the way to the facility. And there's explicit conditions saying that there will be no onsite smoking or vaping at the facility. There was a community meeting held last week on the 15th, and about 10 people attended. I gather that most of them were residents of Andante. And there were, I mean, a number of clarifications and questions were asked. There was nothing that emerged out of that community meeting which has not been addressed. So that, sorry, so that concludes my presentation. We are recommending approval, subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report. The applicant does have a presentation, and I'm available for questions before that.
My one question, when you were talking about the trash, does the dispens, I assume the dispensary has the same kind of regulations concerning how they treat their disposable trash?
That's correct.
As the...
That's regulated by the state, correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, any questions, further questions for Maru?
Oh, I have a couple. Maru, the, the, all these things that the applicant's volunteering to do, that was a result of the RFQ process?
That is correct.
So you selected, one of the, among the reasons that you selected them was these things that they're offering to do?
I did not select, the city council did.
City council did, rather, yes. So, for example, they mentioned that they have 20 employees. Do you know if they are full-time employees?
I don't know. I don't know whether they are full-time in terms of, no, I don't know.
The reason I ask is that they're, they're volunteering 1% of employee time to Ecap, so it would be interesting to know what actual...
Time is...
Number of man-hours we're talking about for that.
The, the operator's permit will have a, a condition on that, and actually, myself and the Economic Development Director have already met with Sean to discuss how we're gonna draft some of those conditions. And so, because we do recognize that there's a lot of interest in knowing that these community benefits are met, and so we're trying to draft the conditions in a way that are enforceable on an annual basis, and that can be doc, compliance can easily be documented.
Because it actually adds up to quite a, quite a big number. If they were full-time employees, that 1% would equal about over 400 hours of, of, I guess, participation at Ecap, which is a lot of time. Okay.
And who tracks it?
Well, that's a great question, and I'm still drafting those conditions for the operator's permit. But the operator's permit is a permit that has to be renewed on an annual basis. So ideally, they would submit some sort of report at, when they go to renew the permit that shows their compliance for the previous year. And that's how we would track compliance.
Is there an age limit for entrance into the, into the space?
Yes, 21.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have a question?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so I will bring up the presentation for Sean. Would you prefer the PDF or the PowerPoint?
I think the PowerPoint should be good. I just put that on there for, just in case.
Just in case.
I think the...
Yeah, that's a good policy.
Yeah, I think that should, should do it.
All right, you're gonna have to raise the microphone up a little bit.
Yes, I will. All right, does that sound good?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Maru. So as Maru said, I'm Sean Luce, Chief Operating Officer of Berkeley Patients Group, and also Rochambeau, one of the principals of Rochambeau. So obviously, Maru touched on a lot of the, of the key details and things about, about our project, but I do wanna go a little deeper on some of the operational details and our community benefits plan, and then be here for your questions. So let me know what I can help with. So our, our vision and goal here is really to, to provide that upscale cannabis experience here in Emeryville. You know, we certainly know from our experience that design and aesthetics and how you manage these facilities really matters a lot. That's important to us, it's important to Joe Son, who owns the property that we're leasing, it's important to the residents, and something that, that we definitely will see through here. And I, I do have some actual renderings of the space later in the, later in the slides. So I wanna talk a little bit about our, our history, because although this is a new use for Emeryville, a, a new company that, that's, that's applying for this permit, we do have a, a deep and rich history of operations in medical marijuana and now adult-use marijuana sales. So as Maru said, we've been operating since 1999 in Berkeley, and that, at this point, makes us the longest operating dispensary in the country. So we've got a lot of experience, we've pretty much seen everything there is to see when it comes to operating a dispensary. You know, we've dealt with the challenges from the federal government, we've been at the forefront of really pioneering regulations and creating a regulated marijuana industry in, in California. So I think I really wanted it to start and highlight that just 'cause I know this is a new use for the city of Emeryville, but I think you can be, be confident that you're, you're in good hands with Rochambeau and Berkeley Patients Group, and we, we have a proven track record of making this work for the communities that we operate in. And some of that local support is detailed here. In our long history in Berkeley, we've had a, a number of awards and accolades. In 2009, the city named October 31st Berkeley Patients Group Day. That was the day that Berkeley Patients Group started business in 1999, and they did that to honor our 10 years of service to the community, reissued that proclamation in 2014 in our 15-year anniversary, as well as Congresswoman Barbara Lee gave us that congressional certificate recognition then too. And then, as you can see there from the image, as adult-use sales kicked off in Berkeley at 6:00 AM on January 1st, the mayor, Aragine, was there with us to cut the ribbon and, and welcome in the, the new day for California. Our operations in these images, just for your context, are from two of our stores in Nevada. Top is Incline Village, Lake Tahoe, bottom is Las Vegas. So, you know, we, we certainly look to tailor a look and a feel in a store to the specific community. The store in Tahoe doesn't look like Berkeley, and Berkeley doesn't look like Las Vegas, and Emeryville won't look like either of those either. But like to really try to fit in where, where we can in the community. So we, we do have those three operating dual-licensed stores right now, Berkeley, Incline Village, Las Vegas, and then nine licenses total with our cultivation and production and things like that. So we do have experience, as I point out there on the slide, in both medical marijuana, where we actually, of course, got started and have been serving those patients in that community for many years, and now adult-use sales is something that we, we also are doing. And although it may seem very similar, there are definitely differences, difference needs for the consumers and the market, but we have experience with both. And our overall scale of our company there, over 120 employees across all of our businesses, and millions of dollars of taxes paid annually. So once again, we're good stewards for the permits that we've been so lucky to, to achieve. The community, the community is obviously very important for us. Where, where we operate and how we operate, very, very critical. We've held two community meetings there at the Andante. We did the first one before we turned in, before we submitted the application to the city back in, I guess we submitted that in October, so we, we held that meeting in September. And that was really to, to get feedback, to hear from the neighbors and the HOA, and just understand what, what was really going on there in that, in that community. Because you can look at it and you can think you know, but there's definitely things that you learn when you sit down with people and just listen to them and share what we're doing and what they're doing, and what needs to happen for everything to, to improve and go forward. So we certainly did learn things from that first community meeting. Some of the things that we included in our plans, particularly our community benefits plan, and secondarily, our security plan, were added from that first community meeting and that, and that feedback. And what we've told the community members that we've been able to interact with through those meetings and through our outreach is that for us, we really look at this as a collaborative process, and, you know, we're joining this community and we wanna be a part of it before we open our doors and while our doors are open, and just continue to, to work with our neighbors to alleviate any issues that, that may come up. So, I didn't realize that was gonna phase in on me. So another important part of our, of our business model, and something that we've, that we've really honed over the years to, to make ourselves successful and make that community interaction work, is our good neighbor policy. You know, this is something that we, that we hold ourselves to internally, as well as our customers. And so that is to us very, very important. You know, some parts of that, our, our commitment to the community, mean being accessible, giving them a number that they can call to reach out to if there is an issue. Picking up trash around our facility and the neighborhood, something that we also feel is very important for us and the greater community. And that customer code of conduct is very important, 'cause obviously, you know, we control a lot of what we do, but the actions of the people that come and visit us and come to our store, you know, can really make or break the experience for our neighbors. So, you know, we have a, a code of conduct that we put and that we give to people when they're coming in for the first time, showing them what's expected, what happens, just to make sure that there are no problems, you know. And I just highlighted a couple important aspects for us. This has evolved for us over the years, as, as our, you know, the business has evolved, the communities have changed, but some of our most important aspects are to make sure that people aren't parking where they shouldn't, that always upsets the neighbors, you know, no public consumption of marijuana is definitely a new one that we have to educate people. I think that's kind of a newer thing, because it becomes more legal and more accepted. I think some people forget those details, that public consumption is still not legal. So we, we point that out for people, and then, of course, loitering is something that we do not, do not wanna see and make sure doesn't happen. Our security plan is definitely a very important part of our application and our operation, and once again, something that we've been able to hone with, with our years of experience and other operations, you know. So a few key details of that security plan that I'll highlight for you are always using licensed security guards. We're not just having anybody act as security, but actually making sure they're licensed and bonded by the state. And then, a lot of our security measures are, you know, in the form of, of technology, you know, having the entire facility monitored by a central station, you know, outsourcing that to a security company, so that any alarms go off, sensors trigger, that's monitored. And then obviously, if that's a real issue and not a false, that goes directly to the PD to, to figure out what is going on. After, after hours, when the place is all locked up and, and shut down for the day, the monitoring then goes online, where when a sensor goes off or anything, we'll have a monitoring service that will be able to feed into the cameras and see if, you know, it's just a bit of wind, or, you know, a raccoon touched the front door, or if it's a real issue that they need to dispatch PD for. So we've got eyes on the, on the property at all times. There'll be, once again, comprehensive camera systems, both with inside the out-store and with inside the store and outside the store for path of travel and issues like that. Security cameras has definitely been something that as we, we went through our communications with the community there, you know, we realized that residents felt that the Andante could use more security cameras, more things around the garage, around the pathways. So that's something that we, we feel like we will be able to upgrade the overall experience for not just our store, but the residents, as we keep a closer eye on what's happening in the parking garage and the path of travel that commercial visitors use there. And then obviously, our, our actual onsite security guards, you know, will, will have someone posted at the door at all times to keep an eye, and really making sure there's no unauthorized access, you know, minors, anyone who, who shouldn't be there. And then making sure there's no public consumption or disruptive threatening behavior, illegal parking, that'll be a, a primary focus of theirs, really keeping us secure and eliminating nuisance activity. And then additionally, we'll have another roaming security guard that'll, that'll help us keep an eye on our, on our parking and other things outside the facility in addition. So our community benefits plan, I guess the only thing that may be a minor detail, but I did just remember it when I was hearing the staff presentation, that customers will be able to use the same path of travel in and out of the business, coming from the parking garage, through that walkway next to the sushi restaurant, and then through the gate and into our unit. That gate lock will be changed so that people can come back in through that gate, go back to the parking garage, same, same route. They, they won't have to walk all the way around the block. That's just a, a change that we need to make in working with the HOA to, to fix that. And I know the HOA even has a, a grant application pending with the city for that particular use, but one way or the other, with or without that grant, we'll, we'll make that happen and give people back into the garage the same way that they, that they came out of it. So community benefits plan, it was fairly well detailed for you already, so I won't bore you with repeating everything. You know, to, to speak a little bit to the question about full-time versus part-time, most, vast majority of all the people that we employ are employed full-time, and we feel like that does work better, better for our business. It just makes us better able to recruit, I think, a higher caliber of person. So we do, we do see that volunteer program as a significant commitment of time, but, but do you think that it will make sense and be, be good for us, both for the community and for our employees too? I feel like it's gonna be a good program. And having myself already been down there and done some volunteering at Ecap, I can say that they're, they can use it, you know. If we provided 4,000 hours, I think they would put us to work. I think that'll be a really good program for us there. Any... So, I think that'll be a really good program for us there. Anything else I would expand upon here that you haven't already heard? No, just that, you know, that as, as we heard about the fundraisers, you know, they, we do want the ability to hold them in the store if necessary, but, you know, we do things like this already. We also have a larger corporate office space in Berkeley that's much bigger and not, you know, the sensitive like a dispensary. So, sometimes we hold events, fundraisers over there, and that's probably what we would do here. The, the community benefit of really supporting, you know, victims of the war on drugs and really helping to right the wrongs of the war on, of the war on drugs is something that's very near and dear to our heart. It's really where we got started back in 1999. We really came out of this as, as activists trying to change the laws and really make an example that marijuana could be safely, legally provided, and use that example to help change the laws and stop arresting people for this. So, this is certainly where we've came from. We've been doing this before this was a business and before it was permitted. It was really what, what rings true as necessary to us and as we like to think and say, you know, this kind of social justice and social equity is really embedded in our DNA and something that we do as, as a company everywhere that we work. And then, once again, that community benefit of the trash and litter, litter removal, although that's something that we always do everywhere, you know, we particularly heard from the Andante residents that the 40th Street side with the bus stop is definitely, has been a longtime point of, of, you know, problem and issues with a lot of trash there and things. And so, that's something that we particularly specifically adopted to really add into our plans to focus on that area for, for our neighbors' benefit. Let's have a small slide here about design. So, we're, we're still finalizing all of our details, but this is definitely the kind of the path that we're headed down. We, we wanted to take the space, as you saw, which, you know, currently has the concrete floors, things, we really wanted to, you know, stick with that and create a clean, minimalist aesthetic, you know? For us, that high-end boutique experience is, is what we're looking for. It's not gonna be a massive store, but we do think that it is, it's gonna be well-designed and well-put-together and, and highly functional. We do have a lot of experience in our other stores doing a lot with smaller spaces. So, and in addition to kind of keeping with the kind of modern and somewhat industrial aesthetics that I think is already present there at Andante, you know, we wanted to mix in a bit of a mid-century modern flavor to our design, and that's what's kind of driving our, our use of the wood tones and palettes and the white marble countertops, things like that. So, that's, you know, a general approach to the way our store will work out and lay this rendering to kind of get the right angle and put the viewer right in the corner. We had to move a glass partition that will, that will help us keep privacy so that if anyone's walking down the sidewalk and the door's open because somebody's coming in and out, you're not gonna see through and see any cannabis or, or sales activity. They have the, that kind of white-looking screen there. In the middle is a frosted glass partition, and it'll be one on the exit door, too. So, it's basically one entrance on that south side, it'll have a small lobby where we'll be displaying that artwork for the local artists, have a, our front desk, kind of receptionist function, answer the phone. If somebody has medical marijuana paperwork that needs to be processed or used, it would happen there. And then, customers walk around to the main retail side of the dispensary, and then we'll have the vending machines, which we found, we're using in our Berkeley location and found that to be a good service and device that, that does kind of help some people just get quick, simple things. If you know what you want and you, and you buy it a lot, you don't necessarily need to go to the counter and talk to somebody about it, figure it out. It's the same product you bought last month, I'll just do it again. So, that seems to work well for convenience and speed of the transactions. And then, that other counter in the corner that we, or Miro pointed out earlier, will be for the online order pickup, and when we do sampling and demo of products, it'll happen there. But we do feel like with the kind of multiple ways that we're approaching this retail of having your more full-length involved experience at the counter, looking at the products, or the vending machine, or the online ordering and the pickup, or delivery, you know, giving all those options to, to our customers, I think will, will work very well and allow us to, to serve a lot of people with, without any problems or long lines or anything like that. Yeah, I guess that's, that's it for my slides there, so I will leave it at that and answer any questions that I can for...
One of the things on the list of community benefits is capital improvement for ECAP?
Yeah.
What would that be?
Right, indeed. So, when, when, when we were there, you know, meeting with Bobby and Nellie and working and volunteering and seeing things, you know, we realized that there's a lot of space that they're using there that, that doesn't have any roof or coverage, you know? And so, in the initial plans, it was written up as, you know, very specific to providing that, that roof coverage overhang, you know, through our, our meeting with city staff that we talked about, you know, the uncertain nature of their lease there, and maybe they won't be there in the future, you know? So, it was, it was kind of generalized down to a capital improvement because they might not be there in time to have a roof when we're actually in business and do that.
Do you have questions?
I have a question. Sean, have you figured out what kind of window treatment you were gonna use for the storefront windows?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we're, our first treatment there was, it's kind of a two-pronged attack. You know, we both want to put this kind of special 3M anti-shatter film on there that you put that really makes it a very strong window, and even if somebody came at it with a baseball bat trying to beat their way in, it's just gonna crack and not actually, you know, disappear and let anyone through. But then, secondarily, we do wanna, wanna create a level of privacy, both for our customers and consistent with state law, so that you can't actually see transactions happening from the street. So, up to about seven feet or so, it would be frosted so that you couldn't see through. Still get some light through, but you wouldn't be able to see what's happening behind it.
I have a couple other questions. When you mentioned public, that public consumption isn't allowed, does that mean smoking out in public or, or, you know, raping out in public?
Yeah, exactly. It's kind of, right now, our laws on cannabis are pretty similar to alcohol, you know, where you can buy it, you can possess it, you can drink it in a bar, but if I'm standing on the side of the street, technically I'm in violation.
So, how is your code of conduct communicated to the patrons?
Yeah, so it's, we, we have it in cards and, you know, pieces of paper sort of at the front desk that we then hand to folks when it's their first time, you know? We have also, when we feel like there's a certain issue in this community or this area that needs to be made more clear, you know, we'll actually put signage up with, has that sort of excerpt, whatever we think is, is an issue, you know, that we'll, we'll highlight that for there, but those, those two ways.
Cool, thank you.
So, Sean, thanks for the presentation.
You're welcome.
You say you have 20, it sounds like full-time employees?
Yeah, that's, that's our projection. I, I don't have anyone employed right now for this.
Right, but then that would be 20 at this location, is that correct? So, your hours of operation are 6 o'clock, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
Yeah, so that's the, the maximum allowable time. I, I wouldn't expect to open at 6:00 AM. I would think, you know, for instance, right now in Berkeley, we're doing 9 to 9. I think we'd be probably somewhere in the 8 to 10, 9 to 10, something like that.
So, you might have, let's see, 10 plus 9, about 13 hours or so when you're, when you're open for business?
Right, right, right.
And you're thinking about 300 people per day?
Mm-hmm.
So, that's about 20 people per hour?
Yep.
And then, your employees, are you gonna have two different shifts, or are they gonna...
Yeah.
So, it'll be like 10 and 10?
Right. Well, yeah, and not even 10 and 10 exactly because, you know, that's 20 people to cover seven days a week.
Oh, I see, seven days a week, yeah, got it.
Right, so...
Okay. All right, well, that's, as I say, I was, I was mentioning about the hours, it does add up. It adds up to about, oh, no, over 400 hours of man-hours of contributions to ECAP, which is terrific. So, you have a, is the security, you have a security guard on premises?
Mm-hmm.
And is that a security guard from a security service, and is that security guard armed?
No, not armed.
Okay. So, you've been operating your store in Berkeley for about 19 years now?
Yeah, just about.
Right. So, the federal government aside, what would you say were your, have been your biggest challenges in your interface with the public?
Right, you know, I'd say it's definitely evolved over the years, you know, things back, you know, 10, 15 years ago. I think, you know, there were more, more friction points. I'm, I'm trying to think, you know, why, why it's evolved so much, but, you know, we did have, I guess what I would just kind of say, some of the, some issues with just poor, poor behavior of, of the actual customers coming, you know, just either coming in with your stereo too loud, or blaring, or peeling out a lot, or, you know, just like kind of low-level nuisance activity. We feel like that, that has evolved and changed, and we've kind of, what we like to think is kind of nip that in the bud, you know? Because we, if somebody is causing those kinds of problems, you know, we refuse, we reserve the right to refuse service and just say, "I'm sorry, you know, you, you're not acting right around here, you're causing this problem, you know, you, you can't come back." You know, outside of those issues, which I feel like have very moderated a lot over time, which is also probably because I think the, the customers who are coming to legal, regulated dispensaries at this point, I think, have gotten a lot older and more mature. I think part of that is maybe a, a problem in that the taxes are so high now that young people who have illicit sources of cannabis, I don't think go to these stores. It's really more the, the working professionals and the baby boomers that have the desire, that want that safe, regulated product, and even the money to pay it after all the taxes are added up. So, I think that's changed some. You know, over the, the course of that long history, we have had spaced out over time, I'd say, two attempted burglaries, not, not actual successful burglaries, but was, you know, someone attempting, and then alarms go off, cops are there, don't get in or get anything. But we have had that over the years. It's about what I would say.
Have you already coordinated with the police department regarding your proposed...
Yeah, so we, we have a, an operator, the operator's permit on file with them. We filled out all the information, we've done our live scans, things like that. You know, we have a very detailed security plan that was reviewed by staff and is already approved. My understanding, though, on the, the final operator's permit, and I have been in contact with Mike Allen, who's handling that for the police department, but the, the final permit will be issued by him after, you know, we complete everything, and he can actually physically see the space and say, "Yeah, the cameras that you said are there," things like that. So, not done yet, but it's filed.
So, you say you have three stores, but you have nine licenses.
Yeah.
Does that mean you have six more stores forthcoming?
Um, no, it doesn't actually. Part of that is because, you know, we are dual-licensed everywhere that we, that we're operating, you know? So, medical marijuana and adult use, you know, similar licenses, you know? We do have cultivation and manufacturing facilities, too, as your other marijuana licenses that we hold. So, yeah, so certainly, don't rule out more stores and certainly like, like that idea, but that's not what that nine represents now.
So, I guess you're one of the few businesses where nipping something in the bud might be misinterpreted.
That's true.
I knew you were gonna pick up on that.
Yeah.
Hard to resist.
And I felt that was coming.
So, you will have licensed security guards, will you, you'll have one inside and one outside at all times?
Yeah, yeah, and the, and the outside will be, will be roaming, so like that not necessarily had anyone fix position outside, but in addition to the person that'll be stationed at the door, yes.
The person at the door is the one that checks the IDs, or is that the person at the counter?
At, at the door, yeah, yeah. What we've doing now to make sure there's no fakes or anything, is we have a little scanning device that looks at it, reads it, you know, just make sure, kind of take that human error out of it, that you might get your numbers confused in your head or whatever. Gives you a big, the right kind of beep if it's valid, if it's not, gives you the kind of wah-wah, sign that you can't miss, that this is, something's wrong here.
Uh-uh, no going in.
Yeah, that kind of thing.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak?
I'm Nasir Azzimi, and I represent East Bay Therapeutic, the second fortunate entity to get the other permit. We naturally support Rochambeau's application for a permit, and in that context, we believe in legalization of cannabis. As I'm sure you know, there is significant amount of illegal activities going on in your city at the point, and with legalization of the two dispensaries, you'll be able to tackle that issue. Those illegal operators are subjecting Emeryville residents to untested medicine or cannabis and also robbing the city from tax revenue that needs to be generated. So, we'll be able to capture that. The Berkeley Patient Group and Rochambeau would handle the situation in, on San Pablo, and we're hoping to establish our operation where most of the tourist activity happens in front of the house. So, I look forward to bring you, bring you our package. We are on track to submit our package to the city by March 5th, so we hope to see you in April. And we essentially bring a whole different opportunity to the city. We are a very high-tech operator and will essentially show the capabilities of our operation through a very transparent establishment to the city council and to the planning commission and the folks that are responsible for enforcement of the proper activities within the city. So, I look forward to seeing you in about a month and a half, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
One more speaker?
Hi, my name is Jossan. I am the owner of the property.
You need to speak towards the microphone.
I am the owner of the property, and I am also the board member for the building. And we, we've been very excited about this project because I was lucky enough to buy that space for my photography studio 10 years ago. And in the last 10 years, we're having such a difficult time trying to bring businesses into this commercial space. And we try, we try, and it's still, half of them is still empty. So, we, we're working really hard to, we're excited, we're working hard to, with the dispensary, with Sean, we've been dealing with, working with Sean for the last year and a half, tried to making sure all the neighborhood is into it, all the resident. We have about 300 people live in the building, so we don't have any problem with it, they're very exciting. And the board members, all the, all the five board members are very exciting about it. And, and we're exciting because we have 90 parkings, and that's, that is our main concern, is like, we don't, we don't want, I, I've been living here for 14 years, and I don't want traffic getting worse and worse. So, when we proposing this to the board, it was because our parking, that's what we wanted there, and I just want the board to know that. I just want the community to know that, that we, we support and we're exciting, and they've been very helpful. They've been very detailed about the, the security system. We've been working very close because as a, as a board member as well, I'm very difficult making sure the 40th Street is clean. I'm the one that brought Sean up into the 40th Street because for the last 15 years, we're having difficult time trying to making sure the bus, the cleanliness, the dirty. So, I'm happy that Sean gonna be there, and they're gonna have a security guard walk to our parking space because we have, we're currently having people come into our parking space, park there, and then take Bart and go to work all day long. So, we, we, we're having like 30, 40 cars in a typical day just because they're parking there. So, we're exciting that we're actually gonna have a security guard go in and monitor our parking, walk around the building. So, we, so for me, as a resident there, I felt must savor just hear about this. So, I, I just wanted to mention that. Yes, thank, thank you.
Thank you. One more speaker?
Jeff Fontis, I, I live at 1122 40th Street, across the street from the proposed site, and I just came to say I support this. I think it's the logical place for it. If you think of what's along San Pablo in this area, it just makes sense to me. So, I just wanted to voice my opinion as someone who lives right by the, the site, share my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else coming up to speak, I'll close the public hearing.
Any comments, questions?
I can certainly see why the, the council picked Rochambeau in the RFP. You folks seem to be pretty professional and have all of your ducks in a row, so I really appreciate your presentation and seemed very thorough, and I was particularly impressed by all the community benefits that you're proposing, so thank you very much for that. It sounds like you are already being pretty well-received by the immediate community, so, you know, I hope that that extends out to the rest of Emeryville. And I also just want to say that I appreciate your thoughtful interior design. It looks pretty good, so those are all my comments.
I appreciate everything as well. I think you guys have done a good job. I think this is a, you guys have been in the business 20 years, but I think adult consumption is new and be... is new and being more of a public presence. I think everything you guys have done to kind of show your willingness to be part of the community and appreciate the space here is really bodes well for you, and thank you for that.
I think the RFQ process really has worked out quite well, and I must say, the list of benefits that the applicant is pledging to the community, I haven't seen anything like that before in a project. It really strikes me as a very nice paradigm for possibly other projects that don't necessarily have to go through an RFQ process, but may be seeking certain dispensations from the commission in return for these things. So I think the city is going to be very well-served by this particular enterprise.
I agree, and I appreciate the work that you've done, working with the residents of the building and with the other people in the community to make sure that you're doing the right thing. It sounds like you have a great track record, and I would move approval.
I would second that. Go ahead. We'll give you the second.
Okay, I would second that, too.
All right, ready for the roll call? Let's see, Commissioner Banta?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Vice Chair Barrera?
Aye.
Chair Donaldson?
Aye.
Four ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
Thank you very much. Welcome to Emeryville. Okay, any comments, planning commissioner comments?
I just, I want to ask Charlie, who is, when, we flashed a shot, the slides for, I forget which thing it was, we were looking at, something flashed about graffiti abatement and the responsibility, I don't know if it was their presentation, but I just wanted to ask, who's responsible for city abatement of graffiti? Would that be Public Works Director or...
No, it's the chief building official.
Chief...
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Do you mean city buildings?
Property, for city property that has graffiti on it that hasn't been cleaned off.
Yeah, that would be the Public Works Department.
Because the tower at the Amtrak station has graffiti all over the glass, the Public Works building that is unoccupied has graffiti all over it, and it's been there for quite a while, so we're not even following our own regulations. So I'd just like to have someone's attention to those items.
Okay, I will mention that to the Public Works Director.
Appreciate it.
Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.